All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to begin today's policy session, the Phoenix City Council, for June 27th, 2017. It appears that a quorum of our city council is present. We'll begin today's meeting by turning to members of the council and see if they have any information or follow-up requests they'd like to provide to our city manager or to the public. Any council information or follow-up requests? Members of the council? Councilwoman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the Parks Department and all the volunteers who participated in dark in the park at Deer Valley. Terrific job, great success, as usual. And I also want to say shame, shame, shame on whoever put the paint in the pool. That's just outrageous. And I -- very difficult to hear. I'm sure all the kids who wanted to go swimming all weekend were very upset about that. But if anybody has any information or saw anybody pouring paint into the pool, please let us know. And I want to remind everyone, this Friday morning, 7:30, District One breakfast at Metro Center, The Hotel, and our guest speaker will be Councilwoman Valenzuela. And I also want to take this as an opportunity to say Paul Blue is retiring. And Paul has been such an asset to the city of Phoenix, and I've been -- had the pleasure of working with him for many, many years. And he has always been there. He's one of those that is always up front, tells you the good and the bad, right from the get-go. And he -- whoever's going to have him next is extremely lucky, and I feel sorry for the city of Phoenix. He will be very difficult to replace. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all you've done over the years.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Other members of the council? Information and/or follow-up requests? Councilwoman Valenzuela, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the nice things that the councilwoman just said about Paul Blue. Paul, thank you for everything you've done for our city. I've only been in office for five and a half years. You spent much longer than that working here at the city, and you're incredibly talented and can work anywhere. And you have that type of ability and potential. And on behalf of my family that I raised right here in Phoenix, thank you for all you've done for our city. And I'm sure we'll look forward to finding ways to continue to work with you. So, thank you. I -- speaking of retirement, Crystal Hamilton, a friend and the retired CEO of Maryville Hospital, retired recently. She's been at the Maryville Abrazo Campus since 2011, and she really found a way to include the Maryville Hospital into the Maryville community. Every time we had a meeting, whether it was a community meeting around public safety, economic development, strengthening neighborhoods, education, the hospital always had a presence. And as a first responder, myself, who visits that hospital in my professional career, my other professional career, constantly, it is a great hospital. And, you know, as an elected official working closely with our stakeholders, it's just been a stand-up organization. So, congratulations to Ms. Hamilton on her retirement. And she plans on playing a lot of golf and probably will get back into the workforce doing something else. But hopefully she'll make sure that she gets enough time to, you know, take a break. So, now, I'd also like to invite people out to the Light Up the Sky event. This is at the Maryville Baseball Park, located at 3600 North 50, First Avenue. All are invited. This is going to happen on Monday, July 3rd, from 6:30 PM to 9 -- well, 9:00 PM. That's the, you know, the activities taking place before the fireworks show. The actual fireworks show will take place at 9:10 PM. It's a lot of fun. If you've never been there, it's one of the best fireworks shows that you can -- that you will experience. And it's a great ballpark as well. Give you a chance to see what we have there in Maryville. I want to thank Inger Erickson and your park staff for always doing such a great job with that event, and I'm really looking forward to it. My family's looking forward to it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Any other members of the council? Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. At this time, I would like to submit for the record a proclamation celebrating the life of former Phoenix Councilmember Armando De Leon. In addition to serving in the Air Force Reserve, General De Leon, who recently died, was also a former Maricopa County Superior Court Judge. And I have a proclamation. Sergeant General Armando De Leon was a dedicated servant to our country and local Phoenix community. As a veteran, city council member, and a family man, he was a shining example of service and patriotism for all of us. Throughout his 32 years of service to our country and the Air Force, General De Leon served as a Reserve Judge Advocate at Luke Air Force Base and a mobilization assistant to the staff, judge advocate in Washington DC, California, and Madrid, Spain. He was released from extended active duty in July of 1965 before moving to the reserves in February 1966. He retired from the reserves in October 1991. General De Leon's military decorations and awards include the Merit of Service Medal, Joint Service Commendation Medal, Air Force Outstanding Unit Air Award, Air Force Organization Excellence Award, National Defense Service Medal, Air Force Overseas Ribbon Long, Air Force Longevity Service Award Ribbon with four oak leaf clusters, Armed Forces Reserve Medal with hourglass device, and Air Force Training Ribbon. General De Leon was awarded the Legion of Merit in March of 1990, and upon transfer to retired reserves, was awarded the Distinguished Service Medal in October of 1991. As a resident of Phoenix, General De Leon was also dedicated to enriching the lives of every member of our Phoenix community. He served two terms as an elected member of the Phoenix City Council from 1970 to 1974, and as a state trial court judge presiding in Phoenix from 1983 to 1999. Additionally, he was a member of the State and County Bar Association and the Reserve Officers Association throughout the duration of his civilian life. General De Leon was also an early champion of Phoenix vibrant Latino community. He co-founded the National Council of la Raza, now the largest and most influential Latino nonprofit advocacy organization in the country. He also co-founded Chicanos por la Causa, a Phoenix-based charity that works to build stronger and healthier families throughout the southwestern United States. Chicanos por la Causa has since been recognized as the largest charity in Arizona and continues to have a major impact for our residents. General De Leon's contribution as a serviceman and a lifelong community advocate will not be forgotten. In his passing, he was surrounded by his beloved family, including his wife of 57 years, Sylvia De Leon, five children, 13 grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. I, therefore, I, Greg Stanton.
And the city council.
And the city council of Arizona, do by commemorate the life of Sergeant General Armando De Leon, and has asked each resident to join me in celebrating and remembering his invaluable contributions to our great city. He has several family members and friends that are here. In particular, I would like to recognize Rio De Leon, his grandson. He was instrumental. I would -- do have to say this because Judge De Leon, that's how I know him, he was instrumental in the city Phoenix and the city politics during that time, and he made great progress of that time and era. I want to say there's also some other good news. Historic Melrose Liquor Store, I am very happy to announce, the Phoenix Historic Preservation Commission and working with PB Bell and the Curve on Melrose has come to an agreement that they will preserve the Historic Melrose Drive-Thru Liquor Store. So, that is, I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. And then we have a new District Four staff member, Alejandro Oviedo. He's standing, sitting, standing over there. Alejandro is a recent graduate from the ASU WP Carey School of Business, where he received his Bachelor's of Arts in Business with a concentration in law and a certificate in social legal studies. He plans on taking his LSAT this year and attending law school soon. Just want to let you know, it's hot out there if you haven't felt it, and our summer pools are open. So, go get refreshed and jump in, I think, some cool water, maybe warm water, lukewarm, but at least it can cool you down. And then, once again, Councilman Valenzuela mentioned Light Up the Sky, July 3rd. I would like to mention the 32nd Annual Fabulous Four, July 4th, and that's from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at Steel Park. This is the largest fireworks display that we have in the southwest. So, please come join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for asking for the proclamation on behalf of Judge De Leon. It's great to see a family member here in honor of an incredible, incredible man. Councilwoman.
Thank you. We have a lot of great guests today, but I'm excited to welcome my state representative, Reginald Boulding, as well as my former state representative, Campbell Wolf. Here's -- welcome to Phoenix City Hall. Very glad to have you both here. A lot of exciting things happening in the next couple of weeks, but one I wanted to highlight in particular is the graduation on Thursday of the Europe Program. Europe has been a wonderful partners of ours at the city of Phoenix in engaging our young people, particularly through the My Brothers Keeper Initiative, and I'm looking forward to joining them on Thursday evening in the Orpheum. Also want to join my colleagues in congratulating Deputy City Manager Paul Blue for his service to the city of Phoenix. He's had a flurry of big wins in the last couple of weeks, including a great new non-stop flight to Europe, which has been a big priority of the council, as well as some major milestones with millions of dollars in vacant land put to good use in the city of Phoenix. So, thank you for those milestones, as well as many others over your career. And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize that this month is Immigrant Heritage Month, where we celebrate the important work that immigrants have done and contributions to our community, and just really enriching the entire United States of America. So, glad to mark that milestone as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Other members of the council? Councilwoman Nowakowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone out to University Park this Friday from 9:30 to about 11:30. We're going to have It's a Beach Out There. We're going to teach people how to swim, and just come on out. Everything's free. It's a great event, especially for those young kids that don't know how to swim. Our staff will be out there trying to help you and teach you about water safety. Also, I'd like to thank the Roosevelt School District for their summer club that they have out there, the culinary summer club that teaches kids how to cook and nutrition and all that. We invited the chefs from the Vig to come out, and they made some -- they gave us their secrets on their pizza and their macaroni and cheese. So, those kids know the secret now. They're out there cooking in South Phoenix. So, thank you to the Vig for coming out, and especially the chefs for their time and efforts, and what a great project for the Roosevelt School District. Also, I'd like to thank Luke Air Force Base. A group of veterans came out and they painted the South Mountain Community Center. It needed some love, and they gave a lot of love. There was about 70 veterans that were out there. It was just incredible to see them work the senior center, the rec room, the community room. They really gave an overhaul to the South Mountain Community Center. So, thank you, all those veterans from Luke Air Force Base for coming out and helping us out. Also, I'd like to thank LULAC. They invited me to come out and give a speech to their state conference, and next year they're going to actually have their national conference here in Phoenix. So, I want to thank all those individuals. Also, they asked me regards to the Phoenix One ID, where we're at with that, and maybe we can get an update later on, finding out what's happening with that ID. Also, I'd like to invite everyone out this Saturday at 8:00 AM, right here between Central and First Street, right where Downtown Market Place is. We're going to have a reinstallation of the new art piece. It's a shade structure. Come on out, check it out. It's going to be great. And also want to thank our reps that are here, you know, Reginald Boulding, that's always out there advocating, working in the community. So, thank you, and also Clovis for everything you do in our community, continuing to advocate and, you know, using the informant to inform our people what's going on in the community. So, thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Gago, one additional point?
I also wanted to welcome one of our Democratic leaders, Representative Fernandez, who is also here. So, we have a full room of distinguished guests. Thank you to Representative Fernandez for joining us as well.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from members of the council? Councilman Waring?
Tonight, so if you're watching this on tape, this is Tuesday, June 27th. So, tonight, at the Paradise Valley Community Center, we're going to have Catherine Sorensen from our Water Department coming to presentation about where the city's at water-wise. So, if you have questions about, specifically about your bill, I'm sure she'd love to answer them, but also kind of where we stand overall. Hopefully not too many questions about bills, but we'd love to be there. I will be there pending the finish of this meeting. So, it starts at 6:00 PM. The Paradise Valley Community Center is just north of Bell Road on the west side of 40th Street, north of Paradise Valley High School. So, we hope people can make it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Councilman Waring. Any other comments? Councilman Nowakowski, one more.
You know, Mayor, I forgot to talk about the NCLR conferences here this year, and at our convention center, they're going to have a family expo, where it's all kinds of resources, from healthcare to you name it. So, if you're not doing anything, it's a free event. Come on down to our Phoenix Convention Center. That's between July 8th through the 10th, and it's a great, great activities are going on. Everything for the family. You'll have Dora, the Explorer Dora, and all kinds of stuff going on. So, come on down to our convention center. That's July 8th through the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments? I'll just add, if you've been by City Hall lately, you've seen a big banner off the 11th floor, and that banner is honoring our very own member of the Phoenix Mercury, Diana Trossi, who last week became the leading scorer in the history of the WNBA. So, the best player in the history of the NBA is ours. And if you're a fan of Diana, a fan of the WNBA, I saw you X-Factor out there. Come by about noon tomorrow, something good might happen. Don't tell anybody it's a secret, though. All right, let's move on our agenda. All right. Next on our agenda is our call for executive session, Vice Mayor. Do we have a call for executive session?
Mayor, in accordance with the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes, Section 38-431.02A, meet in executive session on Tuesday, September 12, 2017, at 1:00 PM in the East Conference Room, 12th Floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. I'll now turn to our city manager and see if there's any report or budget update. Mr. City Manager? None today. Okay, next on the agenda is item number one. Item number one is an item that Councilman Valenzuela has worked very hard on, Code Phoenix, and we want to get an update on Code Phoenix from all of the various departments that are working. And it looks like some of our great funders are here as well, who are helping funding Code Phoenix. Inger Erickson, our department head of Parks, is going to lead the presentation. Is that right, Mr. City Manager? Inger Erickson, as well as Rita Hamilton, our city librarian, and of course, we have representatives from IDA and the Community Foundation. We'll get to them after our staff presentation. First, Inger Erickson, please.
All right. Mayor and members of council, thank you today for giving me the opportunity to bring Code Phoenix to you. Today, we're here to update you on that program that is being facilitated through a partnership with the Phoenix Public Library and the Parks and Recreation Department. Today, as you mentioned, I have Rita Hamilton, the city librarian, Alisa de La Vara, the chief community officer for the Arizona Community Foundation, and Juan Salgado, the executive director of the Phoenix IDA. The Phoenix Public Library and the Parks and Recreation Department share the goal of providing and creating opportunities for the community. Currently, STEM education opportunities are lacking statewide. Only 25% of elementary schools in Arizona teach computer science. 16 of 325 schools in the Phoenix area support a STEM curriculum. STEM jobs in Arizona are anticipated to grow to 24 -- by 24% by the year 2024. The objectives of Code Phoenix are to increase access to coding education, expose youth to STEM concepts, assist children in developing critical thinking and problem-solving skills, and continue to develop partnerships with school and community organizations to provide access to free Code Phoenix programs citywide. I'd like to let Rita Hamilton now, the city librarian, cover the curriculum of Code Phoenix.
Phoenix Public Library has been offering free coding programs in its Mach 1-8 Maker Space located on the fourth floor of Burton Bar Central Library since 2014. Different classes are offered, such as 3D modeling, where 3D animation software is used to provide an understanding of animation; coder dojo, where students learn the basics of coding; robotics club, where kids use basic coding principles to program robots to follow commands; and little bytes, which introduces coding concept to children four to seven years of age. The coding programs have been hugely successful. In 2015, over 9,000 community members attended one of the 440 programs that Mach 1 offered. Building on the interest in and attendance at these programs, the Parks and Recreation Department partnered with the library to pilot a coding program last summer at Maryvale Community Center and the Pala Verdi Library, where 127 students participated in the eight-week program. The students came from the Parks and Recreation Summer Program, and the coding classes were held in the library. The pilot also proved to be a big success, with the students completing a total of 163 coding tasks. These free classes introduced youth to coding, which will be an essential tool for the success in school and growing the technology workforce here in Phoenix. Support for coding programs was given to the library in the 2016-17 program budget, with an additional $50,000 to hire staff and purchase the necessary equipment to expand weekly coding programming to three more library locations, Pala Verdi in Maryvale, the Yucca Library near 15th Avenue and Bethany Home, and Harmon Library in South Phoenix. And in November, the Parks, Arts, Education, and Equality Subcommittee affirmed their support for the library and Parks Department's Code Phoenix collaboration, and Councilman Valenzuela requested that consideration be given to expanding free access to coding programs citywide.
Thank you, Rita. In March of this year, Code Phoenix received a grant from the Phoenix IDA and matching funds from the Arizona Community Foundation in the amount of $500,000 over the next three years. We are so grateful and thankful for this incredible support, and also that these organizations recognize that the potential of Code Phoenix has for the youth in our community to provide these free programs. The launch of Code Phoenix began two weeks ago at Tarver Learning Center and the Choya Library. To date, the summer program has had 337 participants in the last two weeks. In the fall, the program will be expanded to Sunny Slope Youth Center, Mountain View Community Center, Vrenell Coleman Youth Center, and Caesar Chavez Desert Sage Ironwood Libraries. In addition, we'll put it in the mobile recreation curriculum that we have from last year's budget season. Year two and three, we're going to expand to 29 locations citywide by the year 2019. That'll be 17 libraries and 12 community centers. We anticipate we'll have in those three years 1,500 unique participants. We'll have ongoing evaluations and metrics to make sure we're meeting the needs of the community and ensure that the program is meeting success. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our partners, Alisa and Juan, to talk about Code Phoenix. Alisa?
Thank you so much. My name's Alisa de La Vara, and I'm with the Arizona Community Foundation. But today, I'm here as a partner with the Phoenix IDA and the city of Phoenix in this wonderful program. As a foundation, we get approached daily about projects that make sense, that have high impact, medium impact, low impact, and we really take these projects that are presented to us very, very seriously, and we try to assess the value that these programs bring to the community, to underserved communities in particular. So, we were very thrilled with the opportunity to be a part of this program because it fits all of the areas that we are very interested in serving. We've learned in the short course that it's been in operation that the impact that they've made in terms of serving children in the locations that they're at now has been tremendous, and that's only a sign of other things to come. So, we are thrilled with our participation and with our partnership in particular with the city of Phoenix in terms of launching this program. I have to say as well that your Parks Department and Councilman Valenzuela were very excellent presenters in terms of winning over our executive team in terms of looking at this program through a lens that really brings to our attention, at least, the impact that this is going to have in the lives of young kids and underserved communities and their interest in the sciences. And so, we're really happy to be here and happy to be a part of this three-year program. Three-year, multi-year funding is not something we do very easily. It's a commitment we take very, very seriously, but it made sense in this case, and we're happy to be part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Juan?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I also want to echo what Mrs. de La Vara mentioned here today. We're very honored to be part of this program. When this city and Parks and library approaches about this concept, along with Councilman Valenzuela, this really became a no-brainer for us. This is really a workforce development project as we see it. We're starting to prepare our youth for the future, and I think this exposure that they get this young age will continue to perk their interest. We're working with other members, for example, with the Phoenix Union School District, Community College, to continue and build a continuum, so that once they start this program, then they feed into the different school systems and continue to build on the interest that they've learned with that. So, on behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. And in reality, we receive the funding that we can by the support that, Mayor, you and the council have supported the idea over the last year. So, thank you again for this opportunity, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, we're very excited about this opportunity and continue to stay with it for as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the excellent presentation. We have one member of the public wishing to provide testimony, Stephen Veramontes. You should provide testimony on this item, and then I'll hand it over to Councilman Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community, staff. Thank you. For me, coding is a real issue. Like, we talk about, like, white papers and go through all policy statements if and about what thinks may happen and how this benefits your community. I live this every single day. I'm a coder, educated here at Arizona State University, Harvard, and MIT, and I'm an entrepreneur. The lack of talent worldwide, nationwide, this state and this community is extremely deficient for the rapid growth for us to be able to create in a sustainable economy and as we further develop into the next generation. Whether the state policies change here locally about what can be funded, that's for the state level to decide. However, we have an opportunity here as citizens to be able to figure out what is going to happen here in our cities. And I fully support this, not only as a fellow coder, as an entrepreneur, and also someone that does tech education for a living. I fully support this. Mark Zuckerberg is famous for saying that 15 years from now, all our students will be learning coding just like they are mathematics and science, and the only question we'll ask ourselves is why we didn't do it sooner. And I fully believe that. And whether it's a policy decision, whether it's based on funding, I want you guys to view this, and I'm not here to change anyone's minds. That's not the whole point. But as far as looking at this from a financial perspective, we need to stop looking at this as an ROI and looking at it as a ROC, return on community, and would like to focus on that and like yield the balance of my time to the body. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that testimony. Your leadership. Councilman DeCecio, do you have a question, please?
Yeah, Juan, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. You do an amazing amount of work, volunteer work, too, and within our community, Stephen.
Thank you.
One of the -- this is interesting because this all came up, and I knew we were going to be talking about it today. I went and had lunch with my kids, my two 12-year-old girls, and I asked them, I said, "So, tell me about your classes." They're taking coding, and they're taking some engineering class, not engineering, but, you know, it's what a 12-year-old would do. It's not that high-level engineering stuff, but it's, you know, getting them started. And one of the things that I was interested in, and maybe I'd just like to get your perspective on it, you know, I was having lunch with them, and I said, "So, tell me about your class. What's going on with the class and who's in there and those kinds of things?" And they said, the first thing, they were like, "We're the only girls in here. Is there some way to..." I know, just maybe there's some way to get the little girls in that, up, you know, into that, too.
It's not just women, it's also minorities. And being a minority myself, I totally understand the situation. It's one of the things I'm passionate about. It's one of the things I'm passionate about. For us, and I'm not here representing my organization, but I can tell you as an educator that teaches coding in a boot camp style, nationally, 42% of all boot camp graduates that go through three-to-six-month coding boot camps are women. In fact, our first inaugural class for Dead Mountain that's starting August 21st here, the majority of our enrolled students, not applications enrolled students, right now are in fact women. And so we're seeing a trend uptick, right, kind of go in this direction, at least in this community. And if that's the way this community goes and we want to champion those efforts, that's something that we can definitely do. Everyone's trying to figure out, you know, Sal, I'm sorry, Councilman DeCecio.
Call me Sal.
Everyone is trying to figure out, like, how do you make coding cool, right? Because coding, when you start getting into it, it's not cool. Shit's hard.
Yeah.
And...
Well, I don't understand it. I mean, they're 12-years-old and they're already teaching you stuff I haven't got a clue about.
Sorry for the language, but I'm trying to paint a very vivid picture here. However, we all grew up watching MTV, watching SportsCenter, being the next rock stars and professional athletes. The rock stars and professional athletes of this next generation are coders, period. They're the ones that are building unicorn companies. And the cool thing about what I like about the opportunity for Phoenix, guess what comes after a unicorn? A phoenix, right? We have that opportunity to do that here. So, and it all starts with coding.
I think very, thank you very much. This is an action item, but it was Councilman Valenzuela that really worked hard to get the level of funding, the very generous funding that was provided by Arizona Community Foundation, Phoenix IDA. And I'll turn it over to him for comments on this program.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank especially the people at the table, Juan Salgado, Alisa Delevada, Rita Hamilton, Ingrid Erickson, and so many others that are going to impact so many lives with this program. You know, something else that Zuckerberg said, in fact, lots of people say it, and I believe, I believe it to be true, talent is evenly distributed at birth, opportunity is not. And so this is about making coding and all that comes with coding, problem-solving, computing, accessible, equitable, and free to every kid in Phoenix. And a couple of things that I want to read off. Currently, 90% of parents want their grade-school children to learn computer science, but only 25% of elementary schools in Arizona teach computer science in a regular curriculum, according to code.org. According to the Arizona STEM Network, and it was actually in one of the slides, 16 out of 325 schools in the Phoenix area are classified as STEM schools. In Arizona, of the 484 computer science graduates in 2014, only 15% were female. USA Today reported that women make up 17% of technical employees at Google. Notably, only 2% of Google Tech jobs were held by Hispanics and 1% by African-Americans. Similar numbers have been reported in TechCrunch for Facebook. Now, again, talent is evenly distributed at birth. Really believe that? Opportunity is not. So this is about getting that opportunity into these neighborhoods, into these communities, to where every kid has an opportunity to learn these skills, to not just move themselves and their family forward, their entire community, our entire city forward. Going back to that pilot program we did in Maryville, of those 127 young people who took advantage of that program, nearly 50% were women, were young girls. And I visited early and often, and you'd be surprised how many languages, the original languages, these kids would speak at home. So this is an important program for our city. Every job today is a tech job in some way, shape, or form, and this is a way that we're going to move our economy forward. So I'm incredibly excited about it. I want to thank our city staff for being so committed, and I got to tell you, we wouldn't be here today without funding, without champions who really believe in this. And, you know, Juan Salgado on the Phoenix IDA and Alisa Delevada and Steve Selesnow from the Arizona Community Foundation, thank you so much for believing in this program, for believing in our youth, and for believing in our city. I'm really excited to get started here.
Thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela, and for your leadership to make this happen, a very, very important project. Other members of the council, comments on this program? Councilman Nowkowski, please.
First of all, I just want to thank Councilman Valenzuela for all your hard work in making this happen. I also want to thank the Parks and the library for working together as that Team Phoenix approach, making sure we use all of our resources to its fullest. But, you know, especially the Burton Bar Library that happens to be in District 7, all the different innovative ways that you're educating kids, from the Hive to College Depot to this new, this new program, Coding Phoenix, you know. So I think it's really important, but also I have five children under the age of 15, and let me tell you, they outdo their dad and mom all the time. I think we're going to have to have some kind of coding for parents and in their future because our kids are so, they get it, I mean, with the technology that's out there. Running 12 radio stations and having all these new employees and the coding really helps out in the way they think outside the box to communicate. And it's just incredible, the games that they create, their own video games now, and I go, "How did you do that? Oh, it's easy, Dad." Wow. So it's something that I think that older people also, like myself, probably need to take a course and kind of keep up with the younger generation. So once again, thank you, thank you, Councilman, and thank you to all of our staff and especially the supporters, because without the funds to support these types of programs, our community, especially within the South Phoenix community and Maryville, we wouldn't have the opportunity. Our kids go home sometimes with a home without a computer, without any type of ways to advance in this Coding Phoenix. So I really want to thank you for opening up the doors and providing the technology that a lot of our families don't have, but at least we have them now at our community centers and at our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Other members of the council, any comments on this issue? All right, we really appreciate the program. It's going to be awesome. Can't wait to hear about the final report about how successful it was. Thank you, Councilman Valenzuela. Next on our agenda is item number two. Item number two is an action item or posted for possible action. It's a gated alley program pilot. The city manager, who's going to lead the way on this one?
Mayor, members of the council, Deputy City Manager Karen Peters will talk about this. This is an idea that grew from Councilwoman Stark and Councilman Valenzuela, given some issues in their areas, particularly Royal Palms and Sunny Slope. So Karen Peters, who's Deputy City Manager, along with Mario Pontiagua, will lead our team, which includes Sandra Hoffman from Planning and Jesse Duarte. Thank you. Momentary brain lapse from our Public Works Department Sanitation Division because this actually affects the work that's done by our sanitation workers. So Ms. Peters?
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's my pleasure to introduce this item today. As the manager indicated, this was brought to staff this past fall by Councilman Valenzuela and Councilmember Stark, but I know that every single one of your offices gets calls about these issues in our alleys in the community. We've got traffic, illegal dumping, other illegal activity complaints, and so I know you're all very familiar with this. Councilwoman Gallego, I know you've had quite a few residents come to you with these concerns. Everyone has. So we're really pleased to have the opportunity to talk today about what we've done. This is yet another example of departments collaborating and bringing something creative to the council. So with that, Sandra Hoffman from our Planning and Development Department will lead us through it.
Thank you. As was mentioned, the elected officials and the staff have heard a lot from neighborhoods regarding their concerns. Some of the concerns included the illegal dumping that's been happening, as well as unrestricted access, unauthorized persons, and illegal activities happening in these What the residents have requested and what we've heard and listened to is that they would like to have the alleys gated and be able to retain the access to their backyards. We also need to be thoughtful because there are other utilities that exist within these alleys, so we need to ensure that the utilities have access as well as emergency vehicles can access it, such as fire. And one of the other elements that's very crucial is to relocate the trash collection from the alley area to the curb side. As was mentioned, in the fall of 2016, the council requested that staff look at ways to address the issues that have been identified and to create a very large, actually, interdepartmental alley access study group, which again broke through all the barriers and silos. We included eight different sections and/or departments, including City Manager's Office, Public Works, Planning and Development, Street Transportation, Neighborhood Services, Human Services, the Fire Department, and the Police Department in the discussion. And it helped us to understand a lot of the different perspectives involving all the different stakeholders within the city system. And we also did some research regarding what other jurisdictions across the nation have had some kind of an alley closure program. And so we did a lot of research, and it was interesting to find that one of the best examples we found was actually the City of Mesa. And the City of Mesa has actually about 80 linear miles of alley within their city, and we found out yesterday from their public information officer, they have successfully gated all of their alleys. Now, they had already moved their solid waste services from there, and they don't charge the residents anything for gating the alley. And basically, in physical year 2016 to 2017, they spent $182,000, though, to finish gating the alleys. Overall, in the last three years, they spent $500,000 in their budget to achieve what they wanted to achieve. The City of Phoenix, in comparison, while Mesa has 80 linear miles of alleys, we have approximately 878 miles of alleys within the City of Phoenix. So an overview of the gated alley program involves an applicant, it could be a neighborhood leader, or it could be a representative from a registered neighborhood association that would fill out an application and a petition that they would submit to the Planning and Development Department. And what the Planning and Development Department will do is sort of the central source of communication and coordination. When that application comes in, and it can come in either somebody walking in and handing it to us over the counter, or they could email it to staff, so they could do it at the comfort of their own home, getting that to us at any time. We would then take that application, and Planning and Development would then circulate it among all the different stakeholder departments so that they would be informed of this request, including Public Works Departments, Street Transportation, Fire, and Police Departments, as well as outside entities such as the utility companies. The Public Works Department, as Mr. Duarte will explain later, goes into a little more detail regarding how they process things, but Planning and Development will be sort of the central point for it to come in, to process the application, and to go to the final process where we would actually inspect the gate. And with that, I will turn that over to Mr. Duarte.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to... Mayor, councilmembers, I'm going to go over the program details. The lead resident from qualifying alley makes the request. What's a qualifying alley? A qualifying alley is any alley that has trash and bulk trash collection in the alley itself. What the lead resident needs to do then is get with Planning and Development and pick up an application. Once the lead resident picks up the application, the lead resident then needs to get a majority of the property owners adjacent to the alley to sign a petition. The petition needs to be part of the packet. Once that is completed, then the lead resident needs to turn in the packet to Plan and Develop. Once approved by the city, Public Works will then start its relocation process. The relocation process will take about two weeks. What we do for Public Works is that we do what's called a walk and talk. We'll go out to the neighbors, the property owners, and let them know what's going on and when the relocation is going to happen. Then we also make them aware that the relocation will be also for their bulk collection will go to the curb, and also that they still need to maintain their alleys. Then, on the day of the actual relocation, when we remove the large containers from the alley and give them the smaller containers at the curb, we will go out again and make sure that they're aware of what's going on through the whole process. Once that's complete, then Planning and Development will issue the permits for residents to have the gates installed. The lead resident will hire a contractor to install the gates. A week prior before the gates are installed, Public Works will send a crew out there to clean up the alley to make sure it's all clean before the gates are put in. Once that's done, Planning and Development will inspect the gates and installation, and then they'll work with the lead resident to manage the locks and the keys. So let's talk about the pilot program cost. The city obligation is about $400, and that's for permits, and that's per alley. The residential obligation is the gate purchase, installation, and if you see the cost, the chain link is about $2,800 and the wrought iron is about $5,000, but I just wanted you to know those are for two gates, for both ends of the alley. And then they have to maintain the gates themselves and also the alley maintenance as well. Royal Palms is our first pilot area, and that's going to be east of 15th Avenue, south of Dunlap. We've identified six alleys. The alleys noted in black on the mat are participating in the pilot program. There are just about one linear mile of alleys, and it's about 100 households that would be affected in this program. One of the things I want to mention, it's been it for us in Public Works, as always, it's actually a lot safer for our drivers, always drivers, to collect at the curb than it is in the alley. They have to drive through so many obstacles when they're in the alley, so it's a lot safer for them. And then our Phase 2 is Sunny Slope. We haven't yet started that yet, but we are going to work with the council district and the residents there to identify alleys that fit the program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mario.
So Mayor, members of the council, as Karen Peters mentioned, this is another great example of multiple departments coming together, working with the community to help resolve a problem. The pilot program gives us an opportunity to review the effectiveness of the program as we venture into this new program. Staff is recommending that we do a one-year pilot of the gated alley program, and during that time, staff will evaluate specific information on illegal dumping cases, calls for police service, transient activity, homeless encampments, graffiti, the ability of residents to maintain the closed alleys, and potential efficiencies due to moving the trash collection from the alley to the curb side. And within six months, staff will come back to the Sustainability Housing Efficiency Neighborhood Subcommittee to give an update on how the program is moving forward. That concludes staff's presentation.
All right, that's our professional staff recommendation on this proposed pilot project. I want to thank Councilwoman Stark and Valenzuela for bringing this creative idea forward to a unique solution to a difficult problem. We have one resident wanting to speak on the item, Corey McPhee. Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry. Luke Beavens, Corey's on a different item, my mistake. Luke Beavens, I apologize, Luke.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name's Luke Beavens. I live in the Royal Palm community. I'm one of the houses that's up for the pilot program. This all got started about a year ago where a neighbor who lives three houses down from me, who I've known since high school, had a guy come through the alley, hop the fence, expose himself to a three-year-old and a five-year-old girl playing in the backyard, and attempted to take them. So since then, we've been working with District 5 and Councilwoman Stark and Stephanie and Rose, that have been phenomenal, and all the staff down here have been great to work with to eliminate the access there. At the time, I had four cameras at my property. We caught the guy going through the alley, but because the distance from my house to the alley, we weren't able to get a clear picture of him. I've since upgraded it to 12 cameras with two cameras just dedicated to the alley. And I check those daily, and at least four to five times a week, we have either bikes going down there, people walking, trucks, you know. It is a highway for anyone to get in the backyard or commit crime, or drugs, or illegal dumping. So the gates would make a, it would completely eliminate the vehicle traffic, my opinion, mostly eliminate the bikes and the majority of the foot traffic, which will reduce crime. These guys are able to go down there and be unseen, hide in the dark. We're also going to be appointing alley captains who will ensure that the alleys are maintained to a level where it doesn't become an overgrown campout for the transits. It's one of the complaints that we got from our neighbors is that it's just going to become overgrown and neglected, which I point them to the city code where the neighbor, the resident, is responsible for maintaining the alley. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beavens, for that testimony. Not wishing to speak, but in favor is also Misha Robbins. Thanks for coming down as well. I'll now turn it to Councilwoman Stark and see if she had any comments and maybe a motion gets them on the floor, and then we'll have additional comments, a member of the council. Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-year pilot program, including the update at six months. And I do want to thank all the staff, and thank the neighborhood for their patience, because this really did involve a lot of different departments. And I want to remind everyone that this is a pilot program, and I want to stress, it's also a voluntary program. And so, the neighborhood of Royal Palm is committed to do this, and with it, they're going to move their trash from the alley to front curb service, so I really thank you for that. I'm excited about this. I don't have an alley where I live, but I know it's been very problematic for parts of our city, and so I think this is a great pilot program. I do have, in the future, I do have some concerns with the cost, because as we go to other parts of the city, some of the neighborhoods may not be able to afford the gates, and so hopefully, we can look for sources of revenue, perhaps block watch money. And I want to see Commander Lopez out there, I want to thank him for being here. He is the commander for the precinct that Royal Palm is in, and he has been very helpful as well. And so, here we go, I hope it works. Thank you.
Motion by Councilwoman Stark?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Valenzuela, any comments, Councilman?
Now, I want to thank, I first want to thank the residents in the community who came out incredibly organized, and, you know, came out to City Hall multiple times to talk about these types of... The fact is, there has to be a solution here. And this isn't an issue, the alleyways, you know, it's a difficult conversation. There are a lot of people who are very protective of their alleyway, and want their alleyway, and there are a lot of people who want their alleyway to be closed down. It is a case-by-case type of situation. I don't think you can use a broad brush for something like this, but in this particular neighborhood, this neighborhood came out, you know, from what I gather, the consensus wants this pilot. And I want to thank our city team, our city staff, who, you know, spent a lot of time on this, were problem solvers through this process, so thank you so much for the time that you're putting in here. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Stark. It's kind of nice walking through this pilot, this program, with, you know, arguably one of the most knowledgeable city planners, regardless of official title.
Only arguably.
Yeah, only arguably, right, right, Jim. So, it is, it is nice to go through this process with, you know, with my colleague, my partner in this particular neighborhood. And so, this is a pilot program, this is local government being responsive to the needs of the community, and this is step one, and we'll see where we go. But, you know, there's some real issues, obviously, it was outlined by our speaker, and so we have to be responsive, and let's go through this process. So, I'm absolutely supportive.
Thank you so much. Additional comments by members of this council? Councilwoman, please, Vice Mayor.
I have, I guess, some questions, because it's been called a pilot, and throughout my district, in District Four, this has been happening, and they have been doing, they have gone through a process here at the city, and it got accepted. I'm trying to figure out what department signed off on it, but I'm a little confused, I guess. I don't know if it's going through a different department now, or what, but our community action officer, the first responders, meaning fire, have a key to the gate, all of the neighbors signed off on petitions, and so, I guess I'm just a little taken back, only because it has been happening within District Four. And I'm not sure if they're going through a different department, or what is, where they're, where they're moving through, and it's in the central corridor.
All right, please, Ms. Hoffman.
Mayor and council members, and Councilwoman Pastor, there have been instances where alleys have been gated, and what we're trying to do is create a comprehensive approach that includes all the stakeholders. So, while you mentioned various stakeholders that were involved in the gates that may have occurred in central Phoenix, this will assure that we've covered all bases. For instance, the alley is right-of-way, therefore, we're processing it through a special revocable permit process, which, again, we're trying to ensure that we cover everything we need to do legally, and yet allow the neighbors to do what they would like to do. So, while there has been instances in the past, I don't think they may have followed every step they may have needed to follow, but yet, they achieved what they needed to achieve, and their concerns. But we want to create a system, and as this pilot will allow us to do, to be able to find a way to make it streamlined and easier for, again, if the council agrees, and if it's a success, to move it beyond the areas that we have designated as Royal Palm and Sunny Slope for the first two phases. So, I'm not sure if that answers your questions, there had been some things in the past that we're aware of.
Well, I just want to respond to that, because SRP, APS, water, all the entities had been part of this discussion. So, I think this is the same thing. I just want to know, technically, have we been doing it? Do we need it as a pilot, or can we move it out to the city?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Can I maybe answer?
Councilwoman Stark, if you have a good answer? Now's the time, please.
Yeah, I think, there is a process in the city. We do have revocable permits, and we do have abandements. And so, that has always been available for neighborhoods, to either vacate their alleys and the property returned to them, or they go through some kind of revocable permit. I think the real issue has been the trash pickup, and because it really is probably more cost-effective and a lot safer to pick at the curb as opposed to the alley, we wanted to look at a more comprehensive program. So, we do have those processes available, but they were paid for by the neighborhood.
Right.
And in the case of abandements, they actually buy the property back from the city. This, we're going to keep it as public right-of-way, with the ability, again, for fire, police, and the utility to get back into the alley, as well as the neighbors. So, it's trying to take years of trying to hit or miss with the program, and make it more comprehensive. So, you're right, it's been out there, but I think it's, we're trying to make it flow better.
Mayor? Bless you.
Councilman, thank you, go ahead.
About seven years ago, Public Works went out there to all of our districts, and we had meetings regarding the same issue. And I remember that there were some legal matters, that they were talking about abandoning the alleys, and that people could actually purchase the access properties and all that. There was some concerns in my district, and I know in Laura's district at that time, that a lot of people were using them as driveways, they have their garages in the back of their alleys. There was, in South Phoenix, we were having a lot of construction material being tossed in the alleys, and people wanted to actually figure out a way to gate them, and that the cost was just too expensive. So, we've worked this about seven years ago, for some reason, it was put on hold, I'm not sure what happened, but I know that there was a couple areas that were actually used as pilot programs. As I can recall, right around Cristal Mall on 15th Avenue, just south of Montebello, I think there was an alley there that was actually closed off like this. So, that was just, just a little bit of history for Laura. The other thing is, my concern would be liability on our part, if we make sure we go through the law department and make sure that if something happens, emergency or so, and people can't get out, are we liable for that or not? The other thing is, if there's one neighbor that doesn't want to put up the gate, are they... How do we deal with that? I think that was one of the big issues seven years ago. And the other, so the other thing is, $5,000 and $2,800, if we're looking at a pilot program for the whole city of Phoenix, I can tell you that there's some areas in my district, there's no way they would actually be able to cover this. So, I think we need to actually come up with some ideas of how to gate those communities, especially in the areas of my district, that they wouldn't be able to afford this at all. Those are some of the concerns I have.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other members of the council? Councilwoman Waring, please.
Thank you, and a little bit of a similar, and I don't expect an answer right now. So, I have an alley, my neighbors have alleys. We also have washes, and so, when the city a few years ago stopped cleaning washes that were, you know, privately owned, this was news to the neighbors, who hadn't cleaned for years. If you abut it, I guess you basically own half of the wash, and you're shaking your head, so you're familiar with this issue, and it's come up all around the city. So, the question, when I've gone out to these washes, is, well, if that's my property, can I fence it in, and add to my backyard, basically? And the answer was yes, I believe, so as long as you're not impeding the flow of the water. Now, it's been a few months since I've had this discussion, but I think that was what was discussed when I went out to some of these sites with staff. So, again, you don't have to have an answer now, but let's say I wanted to have a fence and block, I haven't had a problem with my alley, but if I did, or if I just wanted to do it, could I just build my own gate in there, as long as it was permitted, and everything else?
Mayor?
Do you have a second?
You don't have to answer on the fly, if you don't know, so...
No, I think the, all the city would be looking in regards to that question, Councilwoman Waring, is it'd have to meet the permit requirements, and so, you can, you know, do some of your own work, as long as you get a permit, there's a process to do your own work onsite. If you're not doing that work yourself, you have to hire a licensed contractor to do that work, but we could certainly work with someone in terms of constructing, you know, their own gate and that kind of a situation. I wanted to quickly address the question raised by Councilwoman Pastor. It has been done from time to time, there are other circumstances where it looks like an alley, but it actually was not dedicated as an alley, it's a public utility easement, and so, those are some instances where it's been closed in the past. It wasn't dedicated as a legal alley, so it didn't have the right-of-way issues associated with it. It was just a public utility easement, that we treated like an alley, looked like an alley, for purposes to close off, but it didn't have that same legal connotations behind it. And specifically, what we were asked to do in this instance is develop a way to make it easier for this to happen, you know, across the city in the future, and that was part of why we looked at this modified process, not kind of the one-offs that were specifically done to address issues over time.
Well, I would like to commend my colleagues for moving this forward. I am just, I think, two steps ahead of you, in the sense of, I would like this to happen sooner than later, due to the fact that there are some of my west-side Maryvale areas that want to move their trash to the front, and don't want the illegal dumping in the alleys, where then they can't even use the alleys for trash. So, I commend my colleagues, I hope the pilot goes quickly, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of the council? Councilwoman.
Thank you. I want to thank all of the folks involved in this effort. There's a lot of unique issues, neighborhood by neighborhood, throughout the city. Councilwoman Noakowski mentioned, we have some access issues in different parts of the city, and in other parts of the city, we've had great partnerships with many different departments. In my district, the Fire Department has been a very important partner in some of our alleys. We've had, for a little while, a problem with several fires in the alleys, and working with the Police Department, we've been able to address that, at least in the short term. So, it, the Police Department has, continues to be active throughout the city, and is an important partner, not at the table, but as we move forward, I think some of the investments this council is making on addressing homelessness will also be very important to some of the issues in alleys, particularly in certain parts of the city. So, it is not just this pilot, but the pilot is one of the many important things we're doing to address resident concerns with alleys. Thank you all for your work on it.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments? Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question. If you said the majority of the neighbors have to agree, what constitutes a majority?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, that'd be 50-plus-one.
50-plus-one, okay. Thank you.
All right, other questions, comments? All right, we take a vote now? I guess we'll roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes unanimously. Thanks again to Councilwoman Stark and Valenzuela for bringing the concept forward, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in districts around the city. Next item on the agenda is item number three. Item number three is an item that I asked to be put on today's agenda, and item number three is a proposal for an alternative way to rename city streets. The city manager, who's going to lead the discussion on this one?
Mayor, Deputy City Manager Mario Pontiagua's been working with Planning and Development Services, Alan Stevenson, and Mo Glancy, and Street Transportation, Ray Dovalina. So, Mario will take it away.
Thank you, Ed, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to discuss the city's street renaming policy. The existing policy was developed in 2006, and tweaked in 2012 to address situations where property owners of a street are interested in changing the name of their street. It doesn't happen often, but the existing process can be useful for what it was designed to do. What the current process did not contemplate were situations where there exists an overarching and broader compelling interest to change the name of a street that the city council deems offensive or derogatory. For example, the city has heard from representatives of the Native American community, including Native American connections, the Intertribal Association of Arizona, and the Phoenix Indian Center, that the name of Squaw Peak Drive is offensive and derogatory. And so, because, oop, I lost my slide, because of the broader and overarching public interest that we are talking about, the discussion and potential actions for this item today center around how the city can address these concerns by adding to the existing policy a way for the council to consider changing the name of a street, even when the residents of that street are not favorable to the name change. Today, the current process is not set up to do that. The first action on the proposed, is on the proposed addition to the city's street renaming policy, and staff will go over that proposal here in just a second. Secondly, an option will be presented to help mitigate the concerns raised specifically about Squaw Peak Drive, by replacing the large backlit street signs with directional signs that direct the public to Piastua Peak within the nearby mountain preserve. And so, Ray Dovalina will explain more about that option in just a few minutes. And staff will get into shortly, the purpose of the additional policy language would be to allow the council to determine whether a street name is offensive or derogatory and needs to be changed. That determination by the council is proposed to be based on the city's existing civil rights anti-discrimination statement in the city code, section 18-1, which lists the categories, including race, color, religion, national origin, and others, as shown on the slide. So, Mo Glancy is here to cover more about how the city's existing policy works, and then Alan Stevenson will address the proposed addition to the policy as a way to address these type of situations. Mo?
Thank you, Mario. Mayor, members of the council, the current policy allows residents to request a street name change for the street that they are on. This requires a $600 application fee to the Planning and Development Department, along with a map of the affected street, and proof that 100% of the property owners on that street have been notified of the proposed change. All owners must sign a petition supporting the requested change for shorter streets with 12 or fewer properties. For longer streets with more than 12 properties, 75% of the owners must support this change. Additional notification is required for larger streets. Arterial streets' name changes require notification of all properties within a half a mile, and collector streets require this notification for all properties within an eighth of a mile. In addition, zoning-type notification signs must be posted, and the Village Planning Committee must be notified. Planning and Development staff also review the proposed name for conformance with technical standards established by the Maricopa Association of Governments. These ensure that the same name isn't already in use on another alignment, that the name length isn't too long, and to verify things like that the pronunciation of the name won't cause confusion. Staff also request comments from other city departments, including police, fire, street transportation, as well as the U.S. Postal Service. If there are no objections, the change is then submitted for city council approval. If approved by council... If approved by council, staff then notifies all residents, all relevant departments, the U.S. Postal Service, local utilities like APS, SRP, and Southwest Gas, mapping services like Google, and the county assessor. In addition, the ordinance is recorded with the county recorder for a public record. The applicant then pays to have all of the signs replaced, and they also pay to have any existing permit records revised with the new street name. With that, Alan Stevenson will cover the proposed addition to the policy.
Mayor, members of council, it's important to note that what we're proposing does not change that policy. That still stays in place, everything that Mo just went through. But what it does is add a process that if the council deems a name offensive pursuant to the slides that Mr. Pontiagua just presented, there's an alternate process that could begin with that as well. And so what would happen in that instance is the mayor or three council members could provide a written initiation to request that the city consider changing those names that are offensive or derogatory, and then also propose a new name. The very first thing that the staff would do, if presented with a petition or a letter by the mayor or three council members, is schedule for the next formal agenda. And so as part of that, then it would be to the full council to decide, are we going to move forward on that or not? If the full council votes on and decides not to move forward, staff won't do anything else with it. That issue will be dead. If the council votes to authorize staff to go forward, then the process we'll talk about will take place. And so if there is a vote to move forward on something, the first thing that staff would do is send out notice to the property owners that abut a proposed street name change area. And so this would be all the property owners that have their address on that street so that we could send them notice within 21 days of that council authorization to proceed to get input from them. That input staff would take into consideration as part of our staff analysis and staff report. In addition, it would be attachments that we would put to the eventual staff report that would come to the full mayor and council for them to consider the input from those property owners that are affected. And in addition, as staff work through during that analysis period, we'll talk a little bit more about what will go in there in just a second. But the next part that we will do in terms of this big-picture overview is, we want to make sure that we notify the property owners twice. So this is their second notice that we would send to them 14 days prior to the city council determination of changing the name or not. So we have two times in there to send notice to those property owners who will abut that street. The first one is, give us your input. The second one is, here's the hearing date where the council will consider the name change so that they can come and show up and may have any comments they would like to at that point. We will try and work to schedule that within 90 days of that authorization to proceed from council, so we can work through this stuff in a timely fashion and get back to the full council within 90 days. And then if there was an authorization to proceed, staff would notify residents and take those additional steps that Mr. Glancy mentioned in terms of notifying the post office and all the other entities that we do as part of our normal address change process. With that, on this next slide, I want to talk a little about the staff analysis and report on what we do in that particular instance. So obviously, each street is unique in terms of what it has. Staff would include an analysis of that, such as how many residential homes, their businesses on that street, all those types of things would be analyzed as part of that. We'd compare the MAG standards review, the information that Mr. Glancy talked about, such as not having duplicate names, making sure that it's in the proper alignment, so that we continue with the standard MAG naming process, which is really put in place to help some of our first responders be able to quickly locate places in the event of an emergency. We would also analyze any city costs for signs. So these are the normal street signs that are out there in a neighborhood, but also any backlit street signs that may be impacted as well. We would include that information. We'd also include an analysis of effective date on when the ordinance will become effective. Ordnances generally become effective 30 days after council takes action. The council does have the ability to stipulate out 90 days or other time periods of when it will become effective. This would be done to give property owners additional time in order to ensure compliance and let them be able to manage the name change process in an orderly fashion. In terms of the potential costs, the other item that staff would then look at is potential costs for property owners who are impacted by a potential name change. And so we'd include that information as part of the staff report so the full council could consider that. From a resident perspective, staff has done some initial research into that. One of our staff members has looked at how they could change their address. If they lived on a street like this that was happening, what could they do? They found a number of online databases and websites where they'd be able to access information to change their names, such as in their address, for banks. All those types of things are out there today. Because we do have a highly mobile population, you can change a lot of that address information via the computer in a fairly easy manner. Driver's license vehicle registrations, for example, that's one webpage that you go to. It changes both of your address through those. You're not required to pay to present, pay for a new driver's license. You are required to update that information online, and as long as it's correct online, you can continue to use your old driver's license. If you do wish to have a new driver's license printed, that's $12 to pay for a new license. Staff also is working on information to facilitate address updates, such as, here's the website, here's the process you have to go to for commonplaces to change the address to facilitate some of that information if it goes forward. We do know in businesses, if there's businesses that have their addresses that are impacted by this, it's similar to the above. They do have some additional signage and marketing material costs that may be there in terms of their business address, as well as any of their marketing materials that may be tied back to their address. That's an additional cost. We'd include some analysis and information on that for the full council to consider those impacts as it comes back around on each individual case. In closing on the proposed process, staff is putting this in as an addition to, not a replacement for the existing policy. And it does include a couple notices to property owners and ensuring that there is a public discussion and debate about whether or not that name change should happen, and some analysis that staff can bring forward. With that, I'm going to...
Do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So one other thing on this last part, there has been some questions about any legal documents that would need to be updated. And as part of any legal documents, we have visited with the law department. They tell us that it wouldn't affect their legal standing if the address, fresh as a will or something like that, still listed the old address. It would not have any impact on the legal standing of that will. In addition, if a name change is approved by council, that's done via ordinance. We would send a copy of that ordinance to all the property owners. That's their legal piece of paper that shows their address was changed, should they have any need in the future to use that. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dovalina, who's going to talk about some of the directional signage.
Thanks, Alan, mayor and council. The second part of this presentation is a consideration to replace the existing backlit street signs with directional signs to Piastua Peak at the intersection of Lincoln Drive and Squaw Peak. As Mario stated, there's been a couple of Native American groups that have provided some concerns of the existing signs. So this consideration would be to look at the existing backlit signs. Regardless of the first request, as you've heard, the additions to the street naming policy, the backlit sign could be changed to a directional sign. The official name of the street does not change. Also, the street name signs at residential streets along the corridor would remain the same. And, I'm sorry, and then this would not preclude anything moving forward with any changes in street names. So this is an example of an option that we could consider for the backlit sign that we're considering. With that, I'll pass it back to Mario.
Thank you, Ray. So mayor and council, there are two posted actions before you today. One is to modify the city's street renaming policy to include the additional steps outlined in this presentation and in the council report. And secondly, a separate action would be to replace the existing backlit street signs with directional signs to Piastua Peak. Again, this would not change the name of that street, but the street name could be considered for a change in the future. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation. We have a few cards here from members of the public who'd like to provide testimony on this new proposal. After we hear from the public, then I'll turn now members of the council, see if there's a motion in a second, and then we can have comments, questions, and discussion, ultimately, a vote on this item. The first speaker is Reverend Reginald Walton. Reverend, are you here? Good to see you, followed by Corey Mcfee. Up to two minutes of testimony.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council stand to support this move. It is time for all offensive and derogatory street names in this city to come down. And this tool, which would be at the disposal of the council, would allow it to be moved. It's time. It's time to stop the offensive rhetoric. It's time to stop celebrating parts of our history that have hurt people and actually caused terror to this day. And so we're asking that you would consider this vote to move forward in this vein. Thank you very kindly.
Mayor, may I ask Reverend Walton? Thank you very much. Councilwoman DeCiccio, you have a question for Reverend Walton?
Just as a question, too, because there are a lot of individuals in our history and the country's history. Now, my parents came from another country, so I want to put that on the record, too. But people like Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, who considered slaves basically a three-fifths vote, he didn't consider them a full person. Would you consider those people derogatory as well, Madison in particular?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. DeCiccio, do you want my real answer? The answer is yes. Although there are things that they did for the betterment of this country, if I was standing in front of them, they would consider me less than human. And so that is disrespectful, that is derogatory, and it has no place in the great city of Phoenix in 2017.
And a lot of those individuals did. Jackson, Madison, I've got a list here, Monroe, Washington, they all considered African-Americans at the time less than those that were white.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. DeCiccio, without mincing words, maybe it's time we look at the way in which we honor some of those that were considered the founders of this country. It is not without precedence to take a look at situations and people. And it is my hope that we would take a look at case-by-case basis. And two names in particular come to mind. Squaw Peak, which is a derogatory term for Native American woman, and Robert E. Lee, who was the general of the Confederate forces and the Confederacy. For those who do not know, each state left the Union in order to preserve slavery. To honor someone who basically became a terrorist has no place in 2017.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Corey Mcfee. Mr. Mcfee, are you here? Mr. Mcfee was opposed to the proposal that we heard earlier. How about Roy Tatum, representing the NAACP, followed by Richard Cruz?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to the committee. I stand in favor of this suggestion and proposal. I believe it is time to be sensitive to the concerns of communities of color, to marginalized communities, communities that did not have a voice, particularly probably at the time when these streets were named. So I stand in honor of my ancestors. I stand for those that did not have a voice to express themselves, with all due respect. And so I appreciate the council taking up consideration to change the policy, to make it easier for those to come to the council to say, I know that this street has been named, whatever, Squaw Peak, or after Robert E. Lee, or whatever the street name may be, but I want you to know that it hurts me. I want you to know that it offends me. I want you to know what the name...I'm from Virginia originally, so I know the history of Robert E. Lee. And when I hear the Confederate, I mean, he's a hero for many in Virginia, in Richmond in particular. However, I also know Nat Turner. I also know Frederick Douglass. I also know the names of Harriet Tubman. And so I almost believe that if we proposed a Nat Turner Street Boulevard, you know, I almost believe that this council room would be packed in opposition. Why? Because some people would say he was a freedom fighter. Some people said that he was a murderer. Well, we take the same position with those fighting for the Confederacy, those offending the Native Americans. So I applaud you, Mayor Stanton, for taking this proposal and taking the request seriously to address the various issues affecting our community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tatum. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
How about Richard Cruz next, followed by Representative Reginald Bolding?
Good afternoon, mayor, council. I stand here as a father, above all things. I have three boys under the age of six. And I feel that their history lesson shouldn't come from street names. And when I say that, I mean that we shouldn't be driving down the street and they say, well, what does Squaw Peak mean, Daddy? And I have to explain that. And my children, they're small, but they're thinkers. Like, well, isn't a good thing to name a street after somebody, right? And so I think about this. And what comes to mind, and I understand separation of church and state, but I think the Bible has a lot of wisdom in it. So regardless of how you subscribe, I think that this hits. And 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, it says, "When I was a child, I spoke as a child. I thought as a child, and I understood as a child. But when I became a man, I put away my childish things." And so as we know better, we have to begin to do better. We can't just say that, well, they were the founding fathers of our country, and because of that, that gives them a pass. It doesn't. And the longer that we stand in spaces that just because it's what we've always done, well, what we've always done will get us what we've always gotten. And I do believe that the city of Phoenix is a city that's about being progressive, not progressive politics about being progressive, which means that we have to move forward. And if all we do is honor the ugly sides of our past, then all we're doing is going back further and further and failing to ask ourselves why. Why are we not willing to truly take a moment of investigation and introspection to say, this is wrong? And there's nothing wrong with correcting what is wrong. The only thing that's wrong about, the only thing that would be wrong is to not do it. So I thank you, and I stand in favor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz. Councilwoman DeCiccio, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, if I could. How would you handle Madison, for example? I mean, he's the one that considered African-Americans less than human, basically, with his three-quarter percentage, would he consider them to be, for taxation purposes?
So...
How do you deal with that, then? And then where do you stop that?
Okay, so I stop at justice. And so if justice is what love looks like in public, then I think we need to have real conversations about what his perspective was. And so I'll divert that by simply saying that we, as a city, have invested in Indian Steel Park, right? And there were some horrific things that happened at Indian Steel Park, right? That's a site of cultural genocide. Now, we can pretend like that didn't happen, and it was just a space where the federal government educated folks from the reservation, or we can say that this is a space where horrific things happened. However, like the city of Phoenix, the Phoenix rising from the ashes, we've taken this space from something that was negative and turned it into a positive for education. So either A, we can say, oh, well, he was just a man of his time, or we can say, he was a man of his time, and that was wrong. Quite often, though, in spaces like Squaw Peak, we're not interested in having that conversation. And so I would ask you, are you interested in having that conversation in a way that presents something that may be uncomfortable? Because injustice is comfortable for some, but uncomfortable for many, and which means that in order to... that in order to create justice, we have to be willing, as a space, to truly dive into spaces that may be uncomfortable for us. Because we're not, you're not here to serve the few, you're here to serve the many.
All right, thank you very much for that testimony, Vice Mayor.
So you led in uncomfortable discussions. And for me, I feel like those residents need to be led in that discussion and to understand the history, to understand why that is derogatory to our native brothers and sister. And I feel like that space needs to be opened up for true understanding as to what they signed a petition for. Because I don't believe they truly understand what Squaw Peak means. And so I feel that that dialogue needs to also happen. In order for our community to change and understand and heal, that dialogue needs to happen.
I fully agree with that. I fully do agree with that. We can't just pass policy without understanding that there's understanding that needs to go along with that policy. Thank you.
I think so much, Mr. Cruz. Appreciate it very much. State Representative Reginald Boulding is next to provide his testimony. I would ask the question, maybe you can address it. You were part of a number of leaders that asked the state of Arizona to eliminate Confederate monuments throughout the state of Arizona. I think although changing any particular street name is not on the agenda today, it would just be the policy that might allow for it, other than the existing policy, clearly underlying this is a couple of street names that were brought up. And so maybe you can address the issue about why the leadership, you and others, called for ending of celebration of Confederate monuments, but not elimination of Jefferson and Madison, et cetera. Please, Representative.
So first, I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and City of Phoenix Council, for even placing Item Three on the agenda. The fact that we are in the city of Phoenix having this conversation about street names, whether or not they are offensive, and allowing the city to really take, the city council emeritus take leadership is very applauding. We know that there has been major conversation nationally, in the state, and also in our city, with regards to markers, monuments, statues, and street names that have honored the painful and dark history that we've seen in this country. Now, and I know that within the state of Arizona, it's a conversation that we've had beginning to, it was highlighted two years ago, but it's been a conversation that's happened for a number of years. Currently, there are six markers within the state of Arizona in which taxpayers are being asked to pay for. Taxpayers are, taxpayers like myself are being asked to use our taxpayer-funded dollars to pay for the upkeep and maintenance of Confederate monuments and markers that many believe were offensive, that I believe is offensive. Individuals who didn't believe that I should have the ability to walk into the State House have a monument that's out in front of the State House. And I find that troubling, and to have a conversation is one in which we need to have. I think it's important to know, at the state level, we're not saying that these monuments and markers need to be destroyed. We're saying that they need to be placed where we remember history, such as a museum, where we don't believe that the city or the state should have any obligation in paying for, using our taxpayer dollars to pay for those. With regards to the city of Phoenix, I do believe the city of Phoenix has been a role model to other cities across this country, on many occasions, for several years. And today is an opportunity for the city to continue to be that role model and show other cities across this country that we have the ability, and we can have the ability with courage, to take a stand, to really address issues that are offensive in this time and age. One thing that is important to note, that the process and the policy change still allows for public input. It still allows for residents to have their voices heard, who may live on those streets. But what it also does is it allows the council to have another tool in their tool belt to really take action, and I think it's important. And on the final note, I do want to say that, while individuals and residents, we live on streets that we call home, every street in the city of Phoenix belongs to the residents of the city, not just individuals who may live on those streets. So it's important that we take that in mind, and it's important that we recognize that. And again, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council, for even placing this item on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Representative Boulding. Appreciate your testimony. Councilman DeCiccio, do you have a question?
I do have to keep asking these questions, though, too, because I got it from the others, too, that they found the Madison, Washington, Jackson, Jefferson offensive as well. The question I have for you is, do you find those offensive as well? And then are you willing to actually go in those neighborhoods and walk and talk to those individuals and educate them on those people, that those past presidents, that they may be a problem to? Are you, how far are you willing to go?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, with all due respect, today we're currently talking about the Confederacy. We're talking about monuments, and we're talking about street names in particular with the Confederacy and also with Squaw Peak. I think that question is for another time, but as of today, Item Three, I didn't see any mention of those. So if that's something that yourself and two other councilmen would, councilmen or women, I'm sorry, ladies, men would like to put on the agenda, I'd love to come down here and address it at that time.
I think very much. Camille Westenberg is the next speaker, followed by Jeremy Helfcott, on behalf of Phoenix Human Relations Commission.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and others here in the audience. I am a retired professor emeritus from Phoenix College, who has taught English and African-American literature and rap literature. We are looking at two types of ills in society. One is name-calling. The peak. I will not use the derogatory word, because I am not a name caller. Is detrimental, hurtful, inhumane to the indigenous people of America and to me? Because there is a term that is often used in reference to African-Americans are people of the African diaspora, that is extremely hurtful. At some point in time, because we are at a point of turmoil in this country, at some point in time, we're all going to have to look up, take the high road, and do the essence of what needs to be done for what is right. Now, I will address your question. As it relates to people, that's the other level. You're talking about human beings who have lived their life on this earth, who have professed some tendencies that have looked at other human beings and have not seen them recognized or acted toward them as human beings because of their appearance, their traditions, their culture, their religion, their music, their dance, their food. And we also have the tradition of naming streets after presidents. That's another continuum. So we're going to have to look at the name-calling component of it, and then the living individuals who have lived that lifestyle. And then, in the state of Arizona, we're going to need to look at the educational system and see whether ethnic studies can be taught in the classroom, K through college, and telling the story truthfully. Young people need to know the truth. I am not an advocate of censorship. When you think in terms of the arts, whether it is drama, a play, a book, I think the dress, whether it's Confederate flag or whatever, if it's on the stage, it needs to be there to reflect the history, the way it was. But when you walk out into the real world, it changes. It changes. And so we are going to have to look at what has been proposed here and recognize it as a very small step in addressing the types of changes to make this world a better place for ourselves and for our children. There's an African symbol called the Sankofa, Sankofa. And it means it's a bird, walking forward but looking back. We have to look back at all of the ugliness. And every culture has some ugliness in it. Do know. Every culture, every people. It isn't that across the line. You can look at an African-American person and say, everyone is good, or an Anglo-Saxon and say, everyone is good. But sitting here, it has been placed on your shoulders. As citizens, it has been placed on your shoulders. As a retired educator, it has been placed on my shoulder to do the right thing. I say to you, I say to you, be a part of the cure, not the problem.
Thank you very much, Professor Westenberg, for outstanding testimony. I'm a little bit bummed that I never had the opportunity to be in your class after the, all right, Jeremy Helfcott is next, representing the Phoenix Human Relations Commission, followed by Collette Watson.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Jeremy Helfcott, as mentioned, here on behalf of the Phoenix Commission on Human Relations. The Human Relations Commission of the city has been looking at this street naming issue for about eight months now. And I believe you all received in the packet for today's meeting a copy of a letter to our chair that began this conversation, as well as you should have received earlier today, a letter directly from our Chair, Brendan Mahoney, on behalf of the commission, that itself underlines the points I'm here to make on the commission's behalf today. While the commission did not feel that it was the appropriate body to lead the charge, to make the specific name changes that were requested in that first letter, in looking at this issue, we felt very strongly and reached a very quick consensus that the city needs to have some kind of mechanism to allow its leadership, namely the nine of you who serve on this body, to make decisions reflective of our city as a whole. And the concern is that, at present, where there are concerns of city street names, which are in their own way monuments, that reflect on the character and the thinking of our city as a whole, to leave the ability to make changes to those in the hands of just a small number of residents, who represent only a very small geographic part of the city. We're talking about policy that drills down to the level of if there are fewer than 12 residents needing 100% consensus. At that point, we're putting the reflection of a population of 1.6 million people strictly at the initiative of a small group of a dozen. You are the elected leaders of this city. You are responsible for the image of this city, for how it's reflected, both within and without. And we believe very strongly that you should have the ability and empowerment to, at the very least, raise these issues and lead these discussions. And I know, Vice Mayor Pastore, Councilman DeCiccio, you've talked about engaging in that dialogue. At this point, that dialogue really has to come from the citizens themselves up. You're not afforded the ability to convene that conversation. The change in ordinance that's being contemplated today would empower you to have those discussions in a meaningful way and at a level that goes citywide. I want to say, this city has had continued success because we are inclusive. People move here to live because we're inclusive. People move here to work because we're inclusive. People start businesses here because we're inclusive. And people choose to expand their businesses here because we are inclusive. Changing the name of a street that is offensive to some does not exclude anyone. And obviously, there will be a public practice to ensure that that name won't be offensive to any particular group of our residents. But having a name that is exclusive to some is a black eye on the city and has the potential to reflect negatively on all of us. So on the commission's behalf and on my own personal behalf, I would urge each of you to support this ordinance with a yes vote today, bearing in mind that in and of itself, the change to the process doesn't make any actual changes. It simply opens the door to have the conversation. And with that, I thank you, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I do, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman, please.
Yeah, I do, and I appreciate your approach on this, too. And I really do on that, because, you know, I, for one, think Squaw Peak itself, the name, is offensive. I found it offensive from day one. I thought what Napolitano did was the right thing with the peak. The problem that I've got is that the process was never followed because the city's never engaged those individuals in those neighborhoods, whether it was the Robert E. Lee street. If I were African-American, I'd probably find that a problem to live on that street, too. I mean, I'd just admit that right off the bat. But the question I've got is that nobody, I mean, we're looking at an entirely new process when the city didn't even go out there, or individuals didn't even go out there and start talking to those individuals that live on that street, and talk to them about it, and find a way to make it work. The problem I've got with the policy we've got right now, it just seems so top-down, like, you know, if you don't like it, we're going to cram it down your throat, kind of a thing, instead of engaging in a conversation with those individuals that live in those streets. I think that's so simple to do, whether it's 12 people, 15 people, I don't know how many live on Robert E. Lee. I think it's probably quite a bit, because it's an apartment complex. But start a conversation with them first. There's, I don't see the need to go through an entire process change when we haven't even looked at how to engage it in the front end of this. I mean, to me, that sounds like the most simple thing to do. Changing a street sign, I get it, because that's the city of Phoenix. But when you're talking about impacting people's lives, just go talk to them. That's just not happened. We talked to one of the individuals that was kind of leading the, you know, the 12 or 15 individuals that were part of my district in that area. And she basically said, no one's really come and talked to us at all. They just put their backs up. All they had to do is read about it in the news media, or hear about it on the radio or on the, that was their way of getting communicated with. It just didn't seem appropriate. It's so simple to go out and talk to people, instead of just cramming things down people's throats for no reason. These are nice people, they're good people, they work hard. I think what's happened is that they've been demonized, because now they've got their backs up, and it just doesn't, it's just not appropriate for a city the size of this to be able to cram things down people's throats without talking to them first.
I think very much. Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yeah, I'd like you to. I'm curious, yeah.
If you'd like to respond, please do so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I believe that this measure today is the right move in that direction. We, as a commission, felt that it wasn't our role either to go knocking door to door. Our role is to foster dialogue on the broader level. And I think when asking the question of, why haven't folks been engaged? Part of that is, there hasn't really been an empowerment at the leadership level, namely this council, to go out and proactively engage in these conversations. It can only come from the bottom up. So I believe this ordinance change today is what's going to empower that dialogue to happen. I certainly hope that none of those residents are feeling demonized. I certainly haven't demonized anyone. I know as a body, the Human Relations Commission wouldn't do so. But I think it does raise a concern on the part of the city as a whole that doesn't bear any judgment on any particular case, this action today. We're not making any changes with this proposed ordinance. We're merely opening the door to a new avenue of dialogue that can be driven by We're merely opening the door to a new avenue of dialogue that can be driven by three members of this council as the elected leaders of our full population as a city.
But this council can do that today without even, I mean, they can literally just instruct staff and say that, you know, we've got an eight-hour rule, go out there and talk to those individuals and find out. The elected officials that want to make the changes could go do that. Citizens could actually help engage in that. I think that when people are, you know, they're brought to a level where they're talking to them rather than talking down to them and making them feel bad about things, you'll get a better response from that. I would lay odds that at least 50% or not more of the individuals would probably look for a change. But the city can today without going through a whole process change, because there's really nothing in here that is, you know, more along the lines of like, it has to fit these certain categories. Just because someone feels it's derogatory, someone believes it is, like, I believe Squaw Peak is derogatory. That doesn't mean everyone does. You know what I mean? There aren't standardizations put in place with this new policy. I think it's just so much easier, it just seems like a political show today, to do something when in fact, it's so easy just to instruct staff to go out there and go talk to the 12 to 15 neighbors, or the 40 or 50 neighbors that may live on Robert E. Lee. Just go talk to them. Sit down with them. Explain to them. Educate them. Talk to them why it's a problem. Find if there's a way to make it work. It just seems that way.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I just want to note that clearly in the policy, those things are defined based on the definitions that exist in Chapter 18, Section 1 of the City Code, which is our human relations ordinance. And I'd also add that there are upsides that haven't even been considered here. For example, we went through a ceremonial name change with Martin Luther King Boulevard. If this council had been empowered with this ordinance, that wouldn't be ceremonial. We could have approached the city and made that unofficial change without the need of that door-to-door upswell. I think if you look at the amount of citizen input in this process, it gives plenty of opportunity for that dialogue to occur, and it doesn't constrain other means. It doesn't stop staff from going door to door if that's called for by this council. It merely enhances your power to represent the city as a whole.
Well, MLK, I support...
Very much, Jeremy. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Councilman, if you have any additional...
Yeah, just one last thing. I supported the MLK change, but it was ceremonial at first, but I believe it becomes permanent, doesn't it, over time?
Ceremonial right now. So, so...
Until you get 75%.
Till we get 75% of the businesses and...
And I believe you're already on path for doing that, correct?
We're educating people.
Yeah.
I hope we are on the path to change Broadway Road to Martin Luther King. Ceremonial, well, if it's ceremonial, we need to just have it happen. If we're going to welcome, we're going to be a welcoming city and a diverse city, then in name-changing, we should change the name of those roads. And that's my two cents.
Amen.
All right, thank you very much. As everyone on this council knows, I think it's important to point out now, today's proposal would just set a pathway, other than the existing policy, to change street names. If and when this passes, and in the fall after our break, there is a proposed name change to a specific street, it would come before this council, and we'd have a hearing about whether to initiate the process. That would begin a public process seeking input, not just from those that happen to live on the street, but the community as a whole, about whether that street name ought to be changed. I believe it was a 90-day period that was proposed for that public output process. And then finally, there would be a second vote of the city council, and it would take a majority vote of the city council to make those, to make those changes. Councilman DeCiccio indicated that he does believe that Squaw Peak Drive is offensive, and also mentioned that he thought that Robert E. Lee is offensive as well during his commentary. If those particular street names are proposed to be changed, there would be a two-step process, two-step process, in which a majority vote of this council had to happen beforehand. Inevitably, there would be a series of public meetings to hear people's input on that subject matter. However, it would not, at the end of the day, this policy proposal, it should be noted, it would not require then that 75% of the residents have to vote in the affirmative. Their input would be heard, but at the end of the day, if a name is determined to be demeaning, in this case, as we, as the city of Phoenix talked about, to our Native American brothers and sisters, or to our African-American residents of Phoenix, if a name is determined, and that decision is made by us. And yes, there is subjectivity to it, just like there is subjectivity when we make any decision before this city council. You know, we don't make things by, we're not robots up here. We're human beings that make that determination after listening to the public. We would use that same public input process for this as we do for any other public policy before this, before the city council. The next speaker is Colette Watson, Ms. Watson, and then followed by Ernest Martinez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also want to thank you, Mayor, for speaking to the public input that has taken place in this matter. And I just want to remind everyone also that there's public input taking place right now, and that the individuals who are coming up and speaking before you in favor of this measure, which I do stand in favor of, we are residents of this community. We are folks who are looking to you for leadership on this matter, and I hope that our perspectives are as well being heard and weighed heavily. So I just want to really talk about for a quick moment what's really at stake here. You know, we're not, it's very, we're talking about moral issues at the moment. It's not just about a street. It's not just about money. It's not just about signs. It's about the morality of these names. It's about having moral courage. And I think that it's very, it doesn't take moral courage to focus on, you know, other street names to kind of obfuscate and distract the debate. It doesn't take moral courage to talk about 75 versus 50% majorities and things of that nature. What takes moral courage is taking a step back and thinking about the origins of a street name like a Robert E. Lee. That street was named Robert E. Lee in 1961. And in 1962, the Confederate flag went up on top of the state house just down the street from the house I grew up in in Columbia, South Carolina. Now, why was that? That was at the height of the civil rights movement, which was a time when people were just fighting for very, very basic freedoms. The ability to have jobs, the ability to use restrooms and water fountains and vote. But there were people in our society who did not want those freedoms to be extended to all and raised these symbols, Robert E. Lee, the Confederate flag, and other symbols of that institution, the Confederacy, in response to that fight. And so now we have an opportunity to right that wrong. And I just think that, you know, no one's flying a flag that says Jefferson or Madison in the commission of terroristic acts, like an Emanuel Church massacre, or a Ku Klux Klan rally. You know, it's very, very easy to get into the minutia of, well, this person, that person. But what takes real moral courage, what takes real leadership, which is what I depend on for my city council, regardless of maybe what may be some of the subjective or misguided sort of opinions or things in our community, what I depend on is leadership from my city council that is morally courageous, that is historically honest. And regardless of your own race, I think we can all be offended by, you know, names like the name Peak, or the Confederacy, and the preservation of slavery. I don't have to be Native American to be deeply offended by that term. And I noticed that our councilman was very, very careful to say that he would be offended by the Robert E. Lee Street if he were African-American. But I submit that I hope, even not as an African-American, that you are offended by that name because of the fact that the Confederacy was created to preserve slavery, the bondage of human beings in our country. It's 2017. We've arrived at a time when, hopefully, we will have the moral courage and leadership to evolve beyond these types of tributes in our community and on our public lands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Watson? Councilman? No. All right, Ernest Martinez.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Ernest Martinez. I live near Pajestewa Peak. I'm also the chairman of the Pajestewa Fallen Heroes Memorial, where we honor our Lorian Pajestewa and our fallen heroes every year at the base of Pajestewa Peak. I'm here to speak in favor of this action. Ever since the name of the peak was changed in 2003, citizens and outsiders have found the city to be in a very hypocritical situation, perplexing to say the least. On the one hand, we have Pajestewa Peak, one of the Phoenix's points of pride, which name was changed to eliminate an offensive word, a word that was offensive to Native American women. At the same time, the street, the major street, or the only street leading to the Pajestewa Peak Trailhead and the Romadas therein, was called Squaw Peak. And this has caused a lot of confusion and has cast a black spot in the city, because citizens and others are not aware of how street names, the current policy of how street names are changed. Likewise, street names that are glorified, the Confederacy, should also be changed. They remind us, they actually reflect one of the worst, darkest periods in American history, and they perpetuate prejudice towards African-Americans. City of Phoenix has been in the forefront of anti-discrimination policies in the state and has codified these in its ordinances. And these ordinances do dictate or require that a process be set up to change street names that are derogatory or offensive to the general public.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martinez. Any questions, members of the council? Okay, next will be Benjamin Taylor, followed by Clovis Campbell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I am Benjamin Taylor. I'm an attorney. To give you some background of who I am for the members I haven't met, I'm also a member of the State Bar Board of Governors, and then a lawyer and a member of the Mary Copeland County Bar Association, on the board of that organization also. But I'm not here to speak on behalf of them. I'm here to speak as a citizen myself, who actually lives in the district of Pajestewa Peak. Of course, as everybody has echoed already, it's extremely offensive. We already heard about that. So I echo that term also. But a lot of times, it does come down to money, and looking at the budget and seeing if you can, you know, change the signs. And doing the research, what the staff has done, it looks like it's very minimal as far as the finances to change the signs. So this is a win-win situation. If something's offensive and you have the resources to do it, why not do it? So I would encourage the city council, we're only, you know, voting today on giving the city council the power to name. And it's a win-win situation. If you vote yes, it gives you the power to rename in the future, when you do have debate on whether you want to rename it, you can. You have the authority and the power. But as a citizen, I find it offensive. As an attorney, I find it offensive. And as the staff had said earlier, the legal documents wouldn't change, and the finances are very minimal to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Clovis Campbell is next, followed by Warren Stewart Jr.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you for taking some time to listen. I know we've heard a lot today, and your staff has worked, and I can tell by looking at this piece of policy very assiduously, to see that it goes into the right way. The bigger concern here is that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to kind of correct some things. As lawmakers, we always know that there's never been a perfect piece of legislation or a perfect policy. There's always opportunity to amend it and make some different changes to it. And this is just one thing that makes it a lot easier for things to go on. It makes it a lot more open process for things to happen. And I congratulate you and your staff on working hard to get this done. Just briefly, and I know that a lot of people have said a lot of things today, and a lot of people have talked about some things from their heart. But as a native Phoenician, been here 55 years now, and man, I didn't realize I was getting that old. But, you know, we've seen a lot of things change in Phoenix. We've seen a lot of things grow. There was a time when the Westwood Hole was the biggest building in downtown Phoenix. And we never thought anything would get bigger than that. But now, we're looking at the way people look at Arizona and Phoenix. And as we continue to grow and become the fifth-largest city that you told us about, Mayor, we just passed Philadelphia, if I'm not correct, all right? We want to make sure that we continue to be a model city. And by changing names of things that are disrespectful or do harm to the people in the community, I think it's the right thing to do. We have some of those things here, and we have some monuments, and we have some things that probably do not need to be monuments. As Dr. Westenberg said, there is a place for learning and for looking at things and looking at the past. And a museum is a place for those things. And I think that as we continue to move forward, the city council continues to make some of the right decisions. I think that this policy goes a long way towards doing that, and I look forward to seeing you all support this. And again, congratulations on working hard with this team and your staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Warren Stewart Jr., followed by Didi Yasi Devine.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Imagine that you went through the atrocities that people of color have gone through in America, and that still continue to persist today. Imagine if those people were named as heroes for you to look up to. Imagine that you knew your true history, but those around you said it didn't matter and constantly made you conform to a thwarted version of American culture. Imagine that you don't have the privilege that you currently have, but all you have is the pride and pleasure of your authentic culture while constantly being told, this is the history we honor and not yours. America has had no problem in changing the names of slaves that were brought here on slave ships. Arizona has had no problem in changing the names of the native land to fit their own property acquisitions. And Phoenix has had no problem moving historical black homes and houses of worship in downtown Phoenix. Now, again, I ask you to imagine. And once you imagine with empathy, make your decision on changing these names. We are not asking for reparations and the 40 acres and a mule that we once were promised. All we're asking for is to change the names of historical markers that have marred images of history to people of color. Imagine Phoenix really reflecting the diversity that it longs for with empathy and reverence that honors history that is just and true for everyone. Now imagine that you don't have to be African-American or Native to be offended by these names.
Thank you very much, Pastor Stewart. Next will be Didi Yasi Devine, and she will be followed by Patricia Hibler.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor, Pastor, and council members. I have been, I'm Didi Yasi Devine. I'm the CEO of Native American Connections. And as most of you know, I've worked in the community, the Native American community here in Phoenix for 38 years. Most of you know that my work is in the grassroots community, and that I just wanted you to know that when we were approached, when we knew the work was going on in the Human Relations Commission about the possibility of this ordinance change and the name change, we did reach out to Lauren DePahy with American Indian Chamber of Commerce, Jake Moore, who's in the president's office at ASU, and the student groups at ASU, including the students who were instrumental in asking the council to create Indigenous Day, which the council did, and we applaud you for that. We worked with the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community and their cultural department, who were the original people that asked for the Pajestewa Peak change, with the Phoenix Indian Center, and Patty Hibler's here and going to speak, with Native American Connections, Inner Tribal Council of Arizona, who represents the tribes, and the Phoenix Indian Medical Center. So we really did talk to the community, and it was in the community's support that we went to the Human Relations Commission and wrote our letter in support of not only the ordinance change, but in the future, the change of the street name. I know you guys know that the work that we do in the community, our neighborhood groups meet in our affordable housing communities. I've been in front of this council to ask for a chronic homeless, substance-abusing population to move into a neighborhood and gotten neighborhood support for that, and I am committed to doing that. I urge you to pass the ordinance change today, and that we're committed within our community to work with the neighbors in that area on the possibility of them understanding the why it's important and coming up with a name change. Sometimes... Sometimes that just cannot happen, and we need the Council and this ordinance to move it forward regardless if we can get neighborhood support for that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Devine. Next will be Patty.
I just really wanted to thank, thank you for the support from our community here in our frontier. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hibler, Patty Hibler.
I want to thank Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Pastor, and the esteemed Council members for allowing me to speak today. I echo much of what you've already heard, certainly knowing when we talk about S. Peak Road, that's a concern for us. And as an American Indian woman, and from what I've been hearing, it's hard to kind of filter between tears and anger. It is good to know that people understand and agree with what we feel regarding that particular space and where we need to take it. I'm also honored to know that our esteemed Council is looking at a process in order to make that change. That's very important for our community. I've been a long-term member of this in Phoenix, and that process is important as we look at creating this great city. We want to create the vision of inclusion for everyone and not to create places that bring tears or anger when we drive down those streets because they belong to everyone. I want to echo what Councilwoman Gallego said when she opened today, and she said she wanted to remind everybody that it's Immigrant Parents Month, again, as a way to create inclusivity to all. And I think that's really the flavor that we want to move forward with today in creating that inclusivity and that process that creates it, when sometimes the process creates roadblocks. So I'm honored that the City Council is looking at this, and I'd be honored to tell all my friends inside and outside of Arizona that the Council is forward-thinking and looking at this in a favorable way.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hibler. Next will be Patty Telahungva. And then I have a couple other cards not wishing to speak, but if you change your mind, let me know. In favor of the proposal, Wendy Theron and Michael Ingram also in favor. Again, if you want to speak, just let me know. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to address all of you here today. I am so emotional and so excited that you are considering this and understand how offensive these names are and looking at being on the right side of history. So think in terms of 10 years from now, 25 years from now, 48 years from now. You know, I know that there was a letter submitted to you from one of the homeowners who lives on Squaw Peak Drive and said they had lived there since 1948 when they bought the house. Think about how many things have changed in that time, you know, things that were acceptable in 1948, 1955, 1960, and what is not acceptable today. So what side of history are we going to be on? And where is our future headed? I'm an avid hiker. I love the Phoenix Parks and all the trails that we have to hike, but I never hiked that peak until the name was changed. And I was there with a lot of other American Indians who hiked the peak that day that the name was changed, and we met at the top and we said our prayers up there. So now today, I love to hike Piestewa Peak. I think that it's important, again, to consider how this affects our children. And I am a daughter of a woman who did not speak English until she was eight years old. My mother ended up going to college and got her master's degree in English and became a teacher. I think about her life and I think about even when I was a child and how that word was used to me. And it's not a compliment. It was never a compliment. It's not a compliment today. And I know there's a process here. I know that we need to look at changing that process, and I applaud you for looking at changing that process. And before Councilman DeCiccio asks us or asks me about name changes and such, I would say, yes, I would change other street names, you know, and I would start by looking at some names in the Native community, because again, Phoenix is right here and the home of the Hugum Indians, and how many street names do we have to honor those original residents? So, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
So I would urge you to look at changing this policy and having a positive vote today. I would say it would be one small step for Phoenix, yet it would be one giant step for humankind, and we would be celebrating that within the American Indian community and indeed in all of our communities here. So let's give Phoenix a chance to really rise from the ashes once again.
If I could too.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Yeah, you know, changing the major roadway signs, I get that in particular because those are the ones that are most visible, and making it compatible with Piestewa Peak would be a logical step, and that would be something I would find supportive. The only part that I find problematic with this entire policy, it is just cramming it down people's throats without talking to them first. I think, and I have a lot of faith and confidence in individuals, that if you go talk to them in those neighborhoods, you'll find the majority, if not all, coming on board on something like that. So my, you know, where I'm going on this, and I usually, I'm pretty direct about things. I'm pretty upfront. Changing those large roadway signs are very logical. It's compatible with the peak. It's compatible with naming of Piestewa Peak. It's, they're all compatible there. It's just when you get into that specific neighborhood, even if it's just one person or two people, I think they deserve to have their government go talk to them first and go talk to them before you start changing anything. I'm just not big on changing a process that, I don't see the need for it today until we have that opportunity to go talk to those people that are out there. So that's where I would be coming from on this. Again, I'd be very supportive of changing the major roadway signs because that is on City of Phoenix land. It's there, and they're the most visible. It's compatible with the calling it Piestewa Peak. I would like to keep it that way, too, quite frankly. But once you get into that specific neighborhood, I think we owe those individuals an obligation to go talk to them first before anything is changed on them.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Winona Theron, did you want to provide testimony or just indicate support for the G-Adalab? Okay. How about Michael Ingram? Is Michael Ingram here? Would you wish to provide testimony or just indicate support for the proposal? Okay, that's all the testimony we have here today. I'll turn to Councilman Valenzuela, see if there's a motion, see if there's a second, then we'll take comments, questions from members of the council. Councilman Valenzuela.
Thank you. This, the streets that we're talking about were created through public funding. These are, these are public streets. They're maintained with public funding. They, if they belong to anyone, it's the taxpayers of the City of Phoenix at large. I do understand that there are people who currently live on this street and people who lived there before and people who will live thereafter. So they deserve to be brought into the conversation. But I do believe that this is the right step. I think it's the right thing to do, and so I do have a motion to put on the table.
Please.
The motion is to approve the proposed addition to the street renaming policy with the stipulation that it also require two committee meetings in the area affected for the residents affected, where staff and elected officials can answer questions and listen to concerns so that those affected don't have to come all the way to the City Council meeting to give their input. Now, I want to be clear, this motion is to make these changes. These are streets that were created, developed through public funding, they're maintained through public funding, and so I believe in the changes. I also believe that there, it would be a good idea for city staff and any elected official to go out and to, you know, help educate and answer some of these questions as well.
All right, so the motion is to support the recommendation as made and to add, in addition, and that there would be at least two meetings in the neighborhood if there is a proposal to change any particular street. That would obviously occur at a later time, but in addition to a five-vote requirement of this City Council to initiate two additional meetings in the neighborhood during that 90-day period, and then come back and have a City Council vote later on. So that's what I heard the additions were to the recommendation. Is there a second to that motion? There is a second to that motion. I'll now turn to members of the council for any comments that they may have regarding this item. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I've thought long and hard about this. I know that people take their street very personal. When they call in and they have a complaint, they don't say, your street has, it's my street has. And I feel very strongly that we have worked very diligently to include all the residents in process. We always invite them to our meetings, but I think in this case, we didn't have meetings. I think that the real problem here is, very similar to what the Vice Mayor said, the lack of dialogue. I mean, I've had so many emails from the people that live on that street, and we've put them in a position where we've got their back against the wall and they're going to fight it. I think most of these people are extremely reasonable, and I think if we had sat down, shared the information that has been given to us, that they would reconsider. But at this point, I think since we have their back against the wall, they're not going to agree. But what I feel very strongly about is the current policy gives them the right to make that decision. And I cannot support being all-inclusive by excluding the citizens that are most impacted by taking away that right. I think when we eliminate rights, it causes distrust of government and perpetuates resentment and turmoil. I'm very surprised that to gain this, we have to take somebody's rights away, and I am absolutely opposed to that, and I cannot support that motion. I do support changing the directional signs, however. I think, in fact, I was surprised we hadn't already done that. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. I'll just make a short statement. I'll be supporting the motion made by Councilman Valenzuela and second by Councilwoman Gallego. It's my firm belief that Phoenix is a welcoming and inclusive city, and we want to send a message about our values as a city, and that means Phoenix should not have public street names whose signs are funded with taxpayer dollars that demean our residents. These are symbols that only divide us. So today's vote is about the public process we can use to make changes when those circumstances arise. It's a process that engages those who live on the street and will listen to those concerns. It evaluates the potential burden they may face, but ultimately, it's a process that recognizes that there are occasions when public taxpayer-funded signs and symbols affect more than those who happen to live on the street. Under today's recommendation, it requires notification of those affected. It requires our staff to evaluate the potential impact. It requires City Council to receive input at public meetings. In fact, it requires the City Council to take action twice, and now with the amendment made here today, it requires two additional meetings in the neighborhood that would be affected with the, with the name change. Members of our community have asked us to consider renaming two relatively small city streets and to change the signs that are funded with their tax dollars. Certainly, information about those two named streets was the reason, was the, was the most motivating reason for proposal to change today's policy. And although changing the street names themselves is not on today's agenda, this council, our council, will have to ask, do we want to continue to honor and uphold the term that demeans Native American women? Do we, as a city government, that is by and for everyone in our city, do we want to continue to honor and celebrate the Confederacy and everything that it stood for? I think we can all agree that these parts of our history should never be erased from the history books, but ultimately, this body will decide, should decide, whether we should celebrate them. And for that reason, I will be supporting the motion made by Councilman Valenzuela. Other members of the council? Councilman Waring, please.
So, so I'd like to talk a little different tact about the, some of the things that are in the reports here, how it affects the people who do live on the streets, because of course, we make this vote. We don't have to pay anything. We don't have to stand in any lines. There's none of that. Somebody else is going to have to do that. Somebody else is going to have to bear that burden. And I'm curious at the language of three reports I've got in front of me about this. So on page 13 of your packet, which is the report for today, you say, although a street name change can be an inconvenience to those affected, costs to residents are estimated to be minimal. Then I go to the report you guys helpfully provided when this was first brought up in 2006, and it says on page 16, changing the existing street name often has significant financial impact on property owners, tenants, and the city. Goes on to list all, and it's a long list, so I won't read it here, of things that people have to change, particularly businesses. And I believe, check me if I'm wrong, there are three businesses, including a school on Robert E. Lee Street. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman.
It was in the paper, so I'm assuming it must have been right.
Waring, we, there are, there's a charter school and some businesses on there.
So here's what it says about that. This is from your report to the city in 2006. Many businesses rely on the name recognition of a street for their business name or marketing purposes. In addition, street names have a direct impact on emergency services provided by the Phoenix Police and Fire Departments as well as by delivery agencies. Delays in these services have significant ramifications to residents and business owners. You continue, you being staffers, in 2006. Experience has shown that affected property owners strongly resist and are unwilling to change an already-named street because of the inconvenience and expense associated with that change. Historically, support for a street name change is most common only if the change is needed to correct errors. You also provided, when this policy was updated in 2012, on page 19, "A thorough notification process," again, this is a quote, "is necessary to ensure that everyone affected by the street name change is aware of the process and understands all the implications of the change. Changing an existing street name often has significant financial impacts on property owners, tenants, and the city." So which is it, fellas? Is it a minimal impact or is it all this here? Before you answer, the author of the 2012 report is somebody named Deborah Stark, so you might want to tread carefully. She's sitting right there. So which is it? How can both of those things be true?
Mario Panigawa, you had a chance as part of this proposal to work with your staff to research a lot of these very issues. So what did you research find?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilman Waring, members of the council. So I believe that those, those statements are intended to capture the fact that there are a lot of considerations that need to be taken into account and speak broadly of those considerations when you're talking about businesses, residents. Those, those considerations also can vary very widely depending on the particulars of the street that's being considered. For example, whether, whether there are any businesses, the size of those businesses, the types of those businesses, because that's where some potential cost impacts need to be considered. But for residents in particular, when we did the research, because there are so many online electronic ways for people to submit address changes, it's actually very minimal in terms of cost. And when it comes to things like driver's license and registration or any legal documents, those things don't actually need to be changed. The addresses need to be updated with those agencies, but they don't actually need to be changed on the documents themselves. So there's, there's no cost that's required along with those. But there is some time that needs to be, to be spent updating addresses, but that can typically be done online, whether it's private businesses, private agencies, or public, public or government organizations. Typically, though, the availability for that is online and it's easy to do. Address changes are very common, and, and so that's, that's what the research that we found was.
So Mayor, Mayor, so you guys, it sounds like, are completely repudiating the 2006 and 2012 reports, which is fine, I guess. I think probably all of us up here should volunteer to go to the DMV or wherever else you have to go, because I assume you have to go get a driver's license, is my guess. I did when I moved. I lived right down the street from Robert E. Lee Street. I used to walk my kids and we'd walk right by it pretty much every day, so I was very aware it existed. But I just remember, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, changing checks and all this other stuff that nobody can really do for you. You've got to do it for yourself. It does remind me of the quote that minor surgery is surgery that happens to someone else. When it's your surgery, it's a big deal. So I really don't think we're taking into account that this is going to be somewhat aggravating, certainly for the businesses. I don't know why all this verbiage was in there, if it's a minimal, not a big deal. But all right. Uh, I'm. But all right. My issue with this is we're going from, so the policy was set up in 2006. I think Mayor Stanton was the only one who was on the council at the time. They get passed unanimously, based on what I can see. I've got the records here. We updated it in 2012, although my impression, unless you guys are going to check me if I'm wrong, it was for big streets, not for the smaller streets, that 2012 update. Deborah, you wrote this report, so you're nodding. So it's really immaterial. Neither of these, I think, qualify as a big arterial. They are small streets. Robert E. Lee, to answer the question earlier, I think, has about 80-something houses on it, I believe. It's sort of segmented between Cave Creek Road and goes across Tatum a little bit, and then I think it stops. I don't know that it goes any further. It is in my district. But I do think in 2006, it was important enough for the council to take an action to make sure 75% of the residents approved of the change, and we are taking that now down to zero. So we can have public meetings, but nobody has to listen to the residents. I don't think that's fair. I found out about this. Dennis Welch at Channel 3 did a TV story. I was out knocking on doors, meeting residents, actually, and I got an email from a resident who lives by the street, not on it, but very close by it. He sent me the story. That's how I found out about it. Mario, when we met last Wednesday in my office, I asked you specifically, because reporters were asking me, "How are you going to vote on this?" Well, it's difficult to tell, because we don't have anything in writing. So I asked again for something in writing, and you didn't give me anything. You said you wouldn't, actually. That was a little surprising, given that this meeting was less than a week away. This meeting was not on any public agendas that I saw. We get these green sheets that give us updates months in advance. This sheet, this is the current one, it goes out to the meeting of December 5, 2017. The copy of this that we got for June 13 did not have this on there. It was updated, I think, June 14, again, less than two weeks ago. So given all this, I'm concerned that we're not really taking the residents who live on the street in account at all. It's kind of the opposite. How often are street names changed? Doesn't happen very often, right, given what you told me?
That's correct, council—
And based on what you said in the 2012, or Deborah did, I guess, I think it was a 2012 report, you don't want to change street names because it can be kind of a pain, even though we're kind of poo-pooing that now. So I had a street name, so a business in my district, big business, changed a street name, I think, before my time on the council, from 71st Street or whatever, to the name of the business. Then the business name changed, and they wanted to change again. I was relatively new to the council. I didn't know what the process was. I contacted whoever I contacted. It's probably been five years, so it's been a while. And what I remember was the visceral reaction from the businesses and the people who lived on that street, who had been there before, and were like, "Yeah, I don't care how much money they're offering," because they were offering money, was my remembrance of this event. They said, "It doesn't matter. It was such an enormous pain, I don't want to go through that again." I mentioned this to you when you first brought this up to me, a week or so ago, and asked you, "Maybe you should go out and talk to some of those residents." I don't think that happened, but it might be illustrated that this might be a bigger deal than you guys are saying. In 2006 and 2012, you thought it was a big deal. 2017, now that you want to make this change and take power away from citizens, because that is exactly what this is doing, completely taking it away. Councilman DeCicco has pointed out, it probably would have been good maybe to go out and talk to folks. It says that we're not changing the street name today, but if you go to, I don't know how a citizen would gather that, because if you go to page 14, Current Street Name Change Request, it says very clearly in our packet for this meeting, "Mayor Stanton has suggested names of Squaw Peak Drive and Robert E. Lee Street be changed. If the council approves addition to the street renaming policy, changes to the names of Squaw Peak Drive and Robert E. Lee Street may be requested as outlined in the new process." I think we can bet that they're going to be changed. So if you live on that street and you're concerned, you probably have a right to be concerned. Did you contact people about, say, this meeting today, the one that we're having today? And if so, when, on those two streets?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes, in answer to your question about contacting people, we did notify the property owners and residents of both Robert E. Lee Street and Squaw Peak Drive that this meeting was occurring, what was going to be discussed. We let them know that the renaming of their street was not a consideration for this meeting, only the policy to address that.
When did you, and how did you contact them?
It was, we mailed letters, June, no, it was June 20—
It was a week ago that we sent notice to 148 property owners and residents that abut both of those streets.
So they probably got the letters Thursday or Friday.
They received, one received it Friday, because I have an email.
We did receive two phone calls in response to those that came in the end of last week. One had additional information they wanted to know, and I think one was opposed.
Well, thank you. I, I don't know. It doesn't take, I was out door knocking last night. It wouldn't have taken very long for people to go out and canvass either of these streets. I think Squaw Peak has 24 houses or something on it, I think I read. I've been on it, but I haven't gone out and counted the houses. I will say about the street signs and the sign to the mountain, I would just ask, you know, street signs are expensive, particularly the bigger ones. You know, it might be wise, if it sounds like this passes today, and we're going to wind up changing the street name, maybe wait to put up signs until you change the street name, because I've had, and for some reason, I've had a few of these recently. We've been getting complaints because the street signs have been stolen, not Robert E. Lee, not Squaw Peak, just in general. And not everybody is on GPS, not everybody is using MapQuest. A lot of people are still driving around looking for street signs. And if you don't have them, it can be hard to get to the street. So I think your proposal is to take down the street sign and put up a sign saying the mountain is this way, but then how will people know that that's actually the street?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, so the directional sign would point people to Piesbo Peak. The smaller street signs that are located along the street at intersections, just like you would see on a local residential street, would still remain. It's only the large, green, backlit signs at Lincoln and Squaw Peak that would be replaced.
Right, but it intersects with Lincoln, so you're talking about taking down the sign that says, "This is Squaw Peak."
But the smaller residential signs would still be there.
Have you driven that stretch lately? Because we've had issues with traffic that got discussed in a case not too long ago. I just, causing confusion for what sounds like it might be an interim period of a couple months, you might just want to put up the regular signs when the street name is, it sounds like inevitably going to be changed.
Councilman Waring, I would just say that even if the name were to change in the future, if the council were to approve that through the new multi-step process, the directional sign could still remain there, wouldn't need to necessarily be changed again.
Okay, so it doesn't, one does not necessarily take out the other.
Correct.
I guess I would just ask, I don't want to claim I'm speaking for every person on every street, but I guess I'd just say, you know, a little bit of consideration for these people who are going to be impacted, are going to have to pay costs, they are going to be inconvenienced, even if it's minimal, even if it's an hour, I wouldn't want somebody just coming in out of the blue. This street was named this in 1961. Before that, Mario, it was Lee Street. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, unless you found some new information since we last talked. So we don't even know for sure that it was originally named after Robert E. Lee. The city does not take votes on these naming of streets. It was the developer who named it. Is that right?
The city annexed this, these streets, this area in 1988, and by then, it was already Robert E. Lee Street. It went through the county process to be named.
Right. I mean, before I was born, it was Lee Street, then it was Robert E. Lee Street, and it's been that ever since. You know, a lot of people probably lived on that street for a while. I guess, just, you know, we're talking about inclusiveness and so forth, it sounds like the people who didn't get included were the people on the actual street who actually are going to have to pay this bill in some fashion. Even if we reimburse them, that's a pain. Nobody wants to be like, "Oh yeah, I'm asking government for my money back." I mean, they're just, they're not going to want to do that, and I don't blame them. Maybe a few will be like, "Okay, if this would have been handled differently, I think maybe people would have been okay with it, or maybe you could have got your 75%." I would have appreciated if we would have tried. This policy is not an old policy. This policy goes back to 2006 and was updated in 2012 for the bigger streets. The policy came out of a problem that was apparently seen, passed unanimously, and now we're just snatching that power back from citizens. It's an inopportune time to be doing that and just saying, "No, no, you're not going to have a voice, actually. We're just going to take this away from you." And particularly in the speedy way that this is being done, I guess, I would appreciate maybe we should have gone out and canvassed it and just seen. I would have gone, I've knocked on stores on Robert E. Lee Street this year, so before this came up. I think probably some of, I have not had anybody say they want these street names changed. I have heard people say this is inconvenienced and so forth, but I'm not discounting any of what's been said before. I'm strictly talking about the impact on the people who live on the street, some of whom, the ones on Robert E. Lee, who live in my district. And somebody's got to speak for them, and nobody really has from the city, and that's frustrating, particularly given what the city has said about this process before, that it's a real pain for people. So—
Thank you very much, Councilman. Mario, you gave some information earlier about, maybe you have a chance to give a little more thorough now about some of the research that you've done as it relates to post office, UPS or other packages, maybe from the DMV. I think the councilman mentioned the need to go, physically go to DMV, et cetera. I think you've done some research on that, and I wanted you to give a chance, maybe give a more thorough answer about the actual impact on neighbors. And also, obviously, if we were to move in this direction, certainly I've made my feelings clear about the street names that are demeaning to people or celebrate the Confederacy. I've made my, but I'm one voter of this council. If this council were moving forward with that, obviously, we could pick an effective date that would have the least amount of impact as well. But maybe you could talk about the impact on the neighbors that you've researched.
Yes, Mayor. And so one of the things that we did was we talked to the United States Postal Service about this change and what impact that would have. And the other thing I would just clarify is that the city would take steps to minimize the impact to residents by being in charge of notification to various agencies that we can do that with. So with the postal service, when a change like this happens and we notify them, they update their database so that the street name, that's the prior street name that's in there would be in there as well as the new name. So if something gets sent to the old name, then it would automatically get sent to the new street name. So it's not an issue for U.S. Postal Service mail. Question was raised, then, well, what about private delivery services such as UPS and FedEx? And they do something similar. When we notify them, they can also have that ability to make that change within their system. There are also various agencies, such as the County Recorder's Office, the County Assessor's Office, the Public Utilities, that the city notifies when the street name change is made, so that that's taken care of. Private mapping services, such as Google Maps and others, we take care of that notification as well. And so all of those are taken care of. Staff would be available to assist any residents with any other address changes that need to be made as needed, and so we're available to do that. As Alan Stevenson described earlier, we would provide a proactive information sheet to assist folks with making those changes as well. But as we've discovered, particularly for residents, there is not a required cost. There are documents, such as driver's licenses, that don't actually need to be changed. I had a discussion with the state MVD office to confirm that, and they said that the driver's license itself would not need to be changed for a street name change. The address needs to be updated in their system, which is something that someone can do for free, but the license can keep the old name if the person wants to do so, which means there's no cost for that.
Can I—
To that point, I'm assuming—
Yeah, to that point, please.
Yeah, so have you talked to even one resident who's been through this process and had their street name changed?
I personally have not.
So again, I gave you a neighborhood where they went through it and said, "We really don't want to go through that again." You're saying it's easy. You don't have to do it. We don't have to do it. I guess I would appreciate, again, I brought it up, I think I brought it up twice, there's plenty of opportunity to go out and find one person, because I remember how angry those people were, and were like, "We're not doing that again." So you're saying it's easy. The people who have actually done it are saying it's hard.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, really, what I'm referring to is the cost impact and the potential for costs for residents, and there's not actually a specific cost that someone has to incur because of that name change that we've found.
Vice Mayor, please.
But people's time is a cost. My time is very valuable, as all our time is very valuable. So we can't capture time back. My whole thing about this is there seems, we're using derogatory, the names of, the street names right now, and where this is the dynamic and the issue that we are talking about. However, there's really a political issue that's going on right now. And doing the history and the studying, six months ago, this letter hit the City of Phoenix Human Relations Commission. Who oversees the Human Relations Commission? Daff?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Human Relations Commission is appointed by the council. It's staffed by the Equal Opportunity Department, but it's not that the staff oversees it. They provide support.
Well, I mean, who provides the support? So this came out of the Equal Opportunity Office. I heard about this in this bubbling last week. I heard about it by all of a sudden getting emails about name changes. Then I got an email stating, or a text stating, about a news feed going on. I am now here, sitting here, going to make a major vote, and I heard about this last week. I read my packet, and it's been going on for six months, this process and this dialogue and everything else. So there is a disconnect in some communication. The other piece is, I do feel that these streets and these names are offensive and derogatory. But I also feel that people have a right and a process to go through in changing a name. And please correct me if I'm wrong, that on February 17, there was a petition submitted from, from those that live on the drive. And if I read this correctly, they applied and they paid for, I want to say, $600? Is that correct or not correct? There's, I'm reading the current policy—
No, that would only be if they wanted to change the name. They wanted, the petition was to keep the name, so there would be no costs associated with that.
Okay. And how much of a petition, or how much of landowners do need to sign this petition in order to keep the name? What's the percentage?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no one. To keep a name, there is no process.
But they signed this petition to keep the name.
Yeah, I think the petition was not an official petition, as Alan would see it in the planning department for that. I think it was an indication of their response to newspaper articles about the drive.
I think they had seen my particular comments in the newspaper, most likely indicating that I thought the name Squaw Peak was offensive to Native American, particularly Native American women, and I made that publicly known, and I think that that petition was in response to those public comments. And I think they've got virtually every resident on the street indicating that, at least according to that petition, that they would like to keep the current name.
Okay. This proposed process, it says, "Mayor or three council members, a written request, offensive or derogatory, propose new names." I would like to add another bullet to there, and because I'm looking at this, we're using it, offensive or derogatory. I would also like to name, if in the future we go through this process, for those that have made positive impact in our community. So how we determine that, I don't know, but I would like to really honor the legacy of an individual who has had positive contributions to the community. How we determine that, I'm not really sure. And I would assume we would come through a building process into determining that. That would be a Brad question, too, on City Code, Section 18.1, but I would like to see that happen.
I don't know if we can put it into the actual motion, if you'd like, Vice Mayor. One way to put it in the motion is that, if we were to follow this process for a street renaming change, for example, if we were to— renaming change, for example, if we were to change the name of Squaw Peak Drive in the City of Phoenix, there would be a preference for the renaming to be named after an individual who has done outstanding work, or whatever phrase that we want to do. Obviously, for example, Lori Piestoa, for whom the Peak is now named, is an incredible Arizonan who sacrificed her life in the service of her country, the first Native American woman to die in combat. I assume that would be a name that would meet the criteria of renaming in favor of someone who has done a great work or outstanding work in our community. I think if that's in the form of the motion, or a friendly amendment to the motion, I don't know if you'd like to do it in that regard, but maybe the maker of the motion would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Well, I would like to add another bullet...
Okay.
...line, saying, not only, it says, "Written request, offensive or derogatory, propose new names." So, I guess what I am saying is, if I want to get three other council members to change the name of a street to Cesar Chavez, I want to be able to have the ability to do that within this proposed process. So, I would like to know, then, what language would I like for friendly amendment?
So, is this, can this be in this same motion, or are we talking about a separate item?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, just to clarify...
Please.
I think what I hear the Vice Mayor saying is she wants to have a process that's not about changing a derogatory name, but it's rather about proactively naming something. That would be different from this. This is about taking an existing street name that, under Article 18-1, in the wisdom of the council, should be changed and proposing it. I think what I'm hearing you saying is you want something, sets that aside. That, I think, is a separate issue you're bringing up.
Not really, because what I'm looking at is Broadway Street, Martin Luther King. We're going to change it, let's change it.
Under this policy, if the council saw, under the way this motion's made, if the council saw that Broadway Road was derogatory or offensive and should be changed, and that could be proposed to change it to something else.
Right. But what I'm saying is I want to add another bullet to saying, "Mayor or three council members, write a request to want to change a name of a positive person, or a positive, someone has made positive impact within the community." Mayor?
Okay. Councilman Gago has, I think, to that point, thought on that. But obviously, we can figure out a way to appropriately honor Cesar Chavez with an official name within the City of Phoenix. We should do so, Councilman.
So I had the pleasure of working with Councilman Nowakowski on the Broadway Road, and it indeed is a very difficult process to rename a major street. My suggestion would be, though, that we have a separate process from this, and this references the section of our code related to offensive names. And I would love it if the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee could look at this, because right now, our process is very difficult, but to me, it should be more difficult than the process for offensive names, and...
Have something to this point, maybe you would...
So I would love it if, I think we should relook at this process, but separately from this particular issue, because to me, when it is an offensive name, it ought to have a more simplified process for changing it, whereas I think there is value in us going out to the community and having the discussion when you're trying to honor a great American like Dr. King.
My response to that would be, we could move that way. However, offensive or derogatory, I'll go back to Madison, Jackson. We can start naming names, naming streets. So, if we want to leave it this way, that's fine, and we could do another process, but if we're going to stick into offensive or derogatory, okay.
Just a moment. So I don't know if the request is that we then, as a friendly amendment, begin a process, figure out a way to properly honor Cesar Chavez with the street name within the City of Phoenix. Councilman, if that's, Vice Mayor, if that's what you're speaking of, and we have that hearing before the Transportation Subcommittee, if that's who you're speaking of.
I'm saying, I want, under this proposed process, where it says, "Mayor or three council members," to add another bullet that says, "For, let's honor those in legacies," or something, of saying that we would be able to honor those that have made positive impacts in the community.
I now see what you're saying. So I think, under this proposed policy, three members of this council, if they wanted to propose, under this policy, to change an existing street name to Cesar Chavez, and it's in the judgment of the city council, five votes, that we initiate that process, then we go have a public 90-day process and come back and change five votes, we could do so. That would be covered, actually, under this policy.
Can I, to this point, this direct point, just for one second?
Councilman Warren, please.
So, I'm not sure this point is necessary to bring up, because I'll read what's in our green packet on page two that was provided us by staff. It says, "Street naming policy addition, renaming policy addition. This report requests approval for, of an addition to the city's street name change policy." I would argue it's completely doing away with the old policy and giving a new policy, because here's how the paragraph closes. It talks about the list that Councilman Pastor was talking about. At the end, it says, "Gender identity or expression, disability, or any other area identified by the city council." To my mind, we are completely getting away and getting rid of the 2006, 2012 policy. You can name any street anything you want, you don't have to get to 75 percent. And I guess I would ask the staff who wrote this, why am I misreading this? Because, "or any other area identified by the city council," is pretty open-ended.
All right, so I think...
Open-ended to the point of infinity, I would argue, which means Councilman Pastor's point is moot. We're going to be able to change anything we want, whenever we want.
All right, so I think Councilman, Councilman Warren is agreeing, then, with the point that if, in fact, three members of the council did want to do that petition, it would be put on an agenda, and we would, and it would be up to the decision-making of this body, whether or not they want to initiate that process, begin a 90-day hearing process, do the two additional public meetings in the community, in the area of the road affected, and then there would be a subsequent vote of the city council. I think, Council, or Vice Mayor, that would be covered under this motion, please.
Well, if we read it correctly, yeah.
It is.
I mean, it's covered, so just know that.
Okay. Any other comments by members of this city council? Councilman Valenzuela, would you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. So, point of clarification, we are talking about two separate items. Obviously, that's something in the future that we can actually see, but the policy is not, we're discussing the actual potential name changes here. And so, if we want to make changes to the actual policy, then that will come to a future meeting. I think that's how I understand it.
Correct. We're only talking about two things today. One would be adoption of a policy that would allow for name changes for offensive or demeaning street names that goes, that is other than the existing policy.
It's what's in the agenda.
Second item that would be on today's agenda is whether or not we would direct the city staff to immediately change the street sign on 22nd and Lincoln, I believe is where it's located, to Piesto A directional sign, and also change the sign inside the Parkway area, the desert preserve area, make it clear that's Piesto A and not the other name. And I, so those are the two items that we're talking about right now.
Are those two separate items to be voted on?
We certainly can. I have no problem...
Yeah, because I would support the Piesto A.
Perfect. I think there's no problem.
I think that'd be kind of neat to do in the district.
It's up to the maker of the motion, whether he wanted to divide it, but I would certainly be supportive of that.
I am supportive of separating them out. I am supportive of both, and I don't say this lightly. I understand it's going to be an inconvenience for some, and I apologize for that upfront. Bottom line is, this is the right thing to do, and we have to do the right thing here. And so, my support, you know, I haven't changed my support on any, on either, in either case here, and so, I'm willing to separate the vote, so that people can vote on one than the other, but I'm supportive of both here.
Thank you so much. Councilman Stark, did you want to say something?
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate it. That was a great memo I wrote years ago then.
You write a good memo, yes.
And it was about major streets, and it is expensive, especially when you have a lot of businesses on major streets. However, having said that, it is an issue of cost. So, as we move forward, can we please explore a way to dedicate staff to help these people with their street name changes if we do approve them, and find avenues to give the funds to these people to help them? If it is minimal, we should probably try to find some way to help these people out. Like the Vice Mayor said, it's time, and I think if we find staff that can help these people through the process of street naming change, I think that really will alleviate a lot of stress for people that live on these streets.
Mayor, Councilman Stark, just to that point, sorry to interrupt, I think that will be an important part of the staff analysis. So, today, someone mentioned Broadway Road, and we've talked about other residential street that has 20 people. Those would be significantly different efforts from staff for assistance. Broadway Road, which is probably 15 miles at least in the City of Phoenix, versus the one at Piesto A Peak, which is less than a mile, and so, we would identify in the staff report that comes back, as the mayor described, for the second vote, we would describe what the staff resources would be, so you would have that as part of your consideration, because they would be dramatically different.
So, as we do an analysis, street by street, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of names that we're changing, can we make sure that we can incorporate in a motion, if we decide to change a street, that we can give some funds to the street, the people on the street? I mean, can we make that motion, or would that be something separate, because it's a budget issue?
Mayor, Councilman Stark, I think that would be, on a case-by-case basis, as you're making that specific street decision, you would be informed by staff as to what we believe the cost would be. We would talk about the city's costs, because there would be costs to change the little white street signs, or the big backlit signs, and our best estimate would be of residential cost, residents and business cost, and we could include a discussion of time as well, because time is valuable. But I think you would do that on an individual basis as you're deciding on a street in the process.
So, because I do think that most people would say, "Sure, go ahead, change the name of the street. I want to be an accepting part of this city. I want to be inclusive." It's just the issue of time and money, and so, if there's a way, we can incorporate that in. I mean, I'm sure a lot of these people, when they bought their house, they weren't thinking about the name of the street. They were thinking, "Oh, look, this is a great house, it's got three bedrooms, wall-to-wall carpeting," or whatever, and they really weren't thinking about the name. So, I think we should, at least we owe it to those people to at least help with the cost. It is an inconvenience, and...
Councilman?
So, as long as we can have as a part of every analysis...
Sounds like it's a friendly amendment to ask, that we try to make this cost-neutral to residents on any proposed street change, and then, as time-neutral as possible, with the support of our city staff. I don't know if that would be, could be included in the motion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is the second okay with that? Okay, thank you. It's been incorporated in the motion.
That will help, obviously, with some of the inconvenience. Again, it's still going to be inconvenient to some, but at the end of the day, it's about doing the right thing, and I feel strongly that this is the right thing to do.
Councilman Nowakowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank all individuals that came out and had this debate with us. I think it's a great opportunity to educate the community, and talking about educating the community, that's what we need to do. I don't see a component in here that talks about educating the community. I believe if we went out there and we educated the community, how offensive it is to the African-American community, to the Native American community, or to any other community that might be offended by a street name, that we need to create some type of a matrix that includes an education component. I just listened to the chair of the Human Relations Commission. How can we use that commission to actually create a tool? If it's a flyer, a door hanger, or a piece that we can educate people on why we, as the City of Phoenix, why we, as elected officials, feel that we need to make this change? So at the same time, we're educating people, not just erasing a negative portion of our history, but I think people need to understand that. My children need to understand why the renaming is happening. But if we just disappear overnight and not educate people, that's wrong. We have an opportunity to really look at the policy that we have in the City of Phoenix and really change, and make some positive change. Going back with the Vice Mayor, I agree with her. We should honor individuals that were heroes and that made positive change in this great city, in this great state, in this great country of ours also. And how do we come up with a policy that addresses that also? Councilmember Gago's and myself tried to rename Broadway Road as Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, and we had all kinds of hurdles that we had to go over. And then finally, we, staff recommended to create, basically, a ceremonial naming of a street. So now we have Broadway Road, and underneath it is Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. But, at the same time, we had to go out there and find public funding, individuals to donate money to actually create those signs. So we need to figure out how to create that funding mechanism to rename these signs. It's very expensive. And at the same time, I can hear, I can understand those neighbors that have been calling us, and they probably got the letters about Friday, because Friday evening is when we started getting all kinds of calls, and yesterday, about, "We weren't notified. What are you all doing? We don't want to change our street's name." I think, once we educate them, they'll be all right with it. I think we need to figure out common ground, and I believe that's what leadership does, is brings people together from all different walks of life and find that common ground. I don't see a component in here that talks about finding that common ground. It's holding two meetings and saying, "Your street's going to be changed." It's not basically educating them, asking their opinion, it's actually just telling them. And I think that what we need to do is figure out that educational component. The other thing that I'm concerned about is Thursday is when I found out about this, and changing a whole policy? Is there other streets out there? I'm not sure. We have 500 square miles of the City of Phoenix. Is there other streets out there that are offensive to other communities that are out there? I believe that we need to have our staff go out there and do some research before we make a major change. We made a major change back in 2012, and it was basically, I don't think it was good enough. Now we're coming back to the table again, addressing different issues. So I think that we need to slow down here. We need to figure out these commissions that we have, like the Human Relations Commission, and how do we use them to its fullest, and not just come up with a great idea and just overnight try to push it through. So I think what we need to do is slow down. I think that these two streets need to be renamed, but is there other streets out there? And if there are, what's the cost for the City of Phoenix to actually take on, exactly what my colleagues are saying, that burden of helping them change their address and that whole process? So, with that, I believe in the second section, item number two, I'm very supportive. Item number one, I think we really need to sit down and have a conversation and create some type of matrix that, in the future, if you have a whole different body up here that believes a whole different way, that there's some safeguards of our community that we can be heard and we can be educated and do the right thing. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Gago?
Thank you. I think I've done enough interviews on this policy that people have, know that I believe it's important, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with it. From my perspective, we are not moving irresponsibly quickly. After the tragic shootings for members of Emmanuel AME, people called on governments, including our own, to remove anything that celebrates the Confederacy. That happened quite a long time ago. The Human Relations Commission has been looking at this for months. There have been articles in the newspaper for months, and we still have more meetings to go before we change any street names. So, to me, this has been a process that has given our community time to talk about what we want to celebrate, what we want to use when we name our streets. I think the Human Relations Commission put it well when they said, "What are we going to, what message do we want to support with our tax dollars?" I really appreciated Ms. Watson's comments that you don't have to be African-American or Native American to be offended by some of these street names. I find them offensive, but that's not the decision we're making today. Today, the decision we're... Today, the decision we're making is what process should we have when we have offensive street names? When you put together a process that says 100 percent of people have to agree, that's really putting an enormous roadblock in the way of change. We, and right now in our community, have processes where you have to get 50 percent of the neighborhood to agree to certain changes, like putting in a speed bump, and it's been very difficult in many of my communities. We have areas where we have high level of absentee owners who are not responsible, not involved in their community, and the fact that we can't get a hold of them stops us from moving forward with things that everyone who lives on the street wants to have happen. So to me, it was a mistake to say we wanted to have 100 percent of people on a small street say that they have to agree. We make changes all the time, as we implement policies, we see whether they work or not, and we try to do better. I'm glad that we're moving forward and saying we want to really think about what we celebrate with our street names in the city, but this is the beginning of a long process, and there are multiple more opportunities for people who don't share my opinion, who want to get involved and comment, so I am looking forward with, moving forward with this step today. When we worked on the street renaming for Dr. Martin Luther King, people in the community were very excited to support us. We had many people who stepped up and wanted to donate, including Mr. Tatum's fraternity, who said, "We want to be involved and support this, we will give you money to support this." And it was really, it made me proud to be part of Phoenix when the community stepped up and wanted to be part of what we were doing. It was a very difficult process, as Councilman Noakowski alluded to, and one that I look forward to taking a second look at, and that's an important conversation that we're having today, so I say that we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Any other comments by members of this council? Councilman Waring, you may.
So, so with the streets, so with number two, the street signs, the street signs will remain, people will find the street, but there will be bigger signs saying, "Mount in this way."
I think, I think the backlit sign would be replaced if this were to be passed, but the...
But there will still be other signs.
Regular street sign would, would remain, I think, until there was a...
Yes, Mayor, that is correct, Councilman Waring.
If you drive Lincoln, there's a lot of traffic, it's, it's kind of a mess, actually, so it's our, people will be able to see where the street is.
Yes.
Even with the inclusion of these signs. Okay, you're not taking signs away, except the big sign, but you'll still have, all right, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Any other final comments by members of this council?
And are we splitting up this vote, or?
Councilman Noakowski, go ahead.
So we're not getting rid of all the streets' signs, right? We're just getting rid of just two?
If this were to pass today, what's on the, there are two things, there are going to be anything about the request of some of the council, two separate votes. If the second one were to pass, it would replace the backlit street sign at about 22nd Street and Lincoln, which currently points you in the direction of Squaw Peak, it would now say Piastewa Peak. Then it would change signs inside the Piastewa Peak Desert Preserve area, which I think still, there are some signs that still have Squaw Peak name, is that accurate? Or is it, is it just the backlit sign? I apologize.
Mayor, I believe it is just the backlit sign, I don't believe we have any signs inside the city's park boundaries that say that.
I think there are, Mayor.
Okay, there's two street signs, what's the second street sign, then? I apologize.
The, the two street signs are on Lincoln, and they're going, one's, one you see going northbound, the other you see coming southbound, so it's, they're, they're both those backlit signs that you see on Lincoln.
Mayor?
Okay, I think the proper response to myself is, duh.
Could add something to that?
I missed that, sorry, but, okay. Councilman Noakowski, you have any questions?
Can we also do an analysis within the park boundary? I believe that there are still some signage in there somewhere. I hike, I, you know, I would like to get all that changed out.
If, if, in fact, there are city of Phoenix Parks and Recreation Department signs that say Squaw Peak, we should change those.
But there's no residence on those, yeah, that would change immediately.
That's not the name of the peak any longer.
Okay, Mayor, if you could include that in the motion for the number two, I'm not going to support number one, but I'll change, support number two, but if you could, Mayor, have someone include that in the motion.
Councilman Valenzuela? I think that was the intent, but go ahead, but I think we'll formally include that, okay. Second is okay with that? Okay. All right, any other final comments or questions on this item?
What's the item? Is it one or two we're voting on?
I'm debating which one we should throw out there first.
I'm already telling, I'm good with two, I'm not good with one.
We'll start with number one. Number one would be the modifying the city's street renaming policy with the amendments added by Councilman Valenzuela, including the friendly amendments, those being two additional meetings in the immediate neighborhood for any particular street sign, in addition to the meeting to initiate a process by the council and initiate a vote. So two additional meetings, and then at the polite request of Councilwoman Stark, that we would make this cost-neutral to residents, and then, as I described, time-neutral, direct staff to try to work with residents to minimize any time that they may take, to minimize any inconvenience to residents. I know, I think those are the amendments to the, to the motion. Okay, I'm going to ask for a roll call, and we'll start with number one. Roll call.
Councilman DeCecio.
No.
Councilwoman Gago.
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Please.
I believe that if we're going to be cost-neutral, I'd like to see what other signs, I want to figure out where this budget's coming from, and what the cost is going to be. I believe that there's other streets out there that we don't know of, that's offensive to other communities. I don't believe we did the research out there to find out, the 500 square miles of the city of Phoenix, there must be some other streets out there that's offensive. So at this time, I don't think we did enough research, enough of our homework, and I, I think that we're rushing. I, I believe the two streets that we're addressing needs to be changed, but I, I think if we're going to put cost-neutral in there, in the future, if there's 100 streets, 300 streets, where is that funding coming from? Do we have to change our budget to give the streets extra revenue to cover that cost? And those questions weren't answered, and I just can't vote in good conscience of, in being a good steward of tax dollars to just give a blank check to our staff without knowing what the cost is going to be, so I'm going to have to be a no at this time.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilman Waring?
Mayor, I'd like to explain very quickly, just in summarize, you know, I think this is totally doing away, as I said earlier, based on this green sheet where it says, or any other area is identified by the city council. It's taking the 2006 policy that was updated in 2012, which passed, I believe, the council unanimously. Mayor Stanton was on the council for the 2006 vote, and several of us were on the council for the 2012 vote, including myself. We apparently thought it was important to be inclusive, it says so right in the reports, some of which I read to you from those dates, and we're now totally taking that away. I believe with this motion, we can change any street name to anything that we like. I don't think that's appropriate, not debating the merits of the, the two names that have come up today, it's more the fact that, you know, it probably would have been nice to go ask those neighbors first. I, I am pretty shocked that nobody went and talked to even one person who's been through this process to find out what it's actually like. That, that just seems like that would have been an obvious one, and I brought it up a couple times, so it's not like you'd have had to think of it yourselves. Being a little more considerate to other people's feelings was a general theme of today's meeting, and we are doing the exact opposite of that. When you guys tell me you notified the people on Robert E. Lee, they got a letter in the mail, maybe if they were home, if they weren't on vacation, school's out, it's summer in Phoenix, if they opened every piece of mail they get from the city of Phoenix, yes, then I guess they got notified on Friday? That doesn't seem right to me. Hey, we're going to take some of your money, and probably a bunch of your time, and we're just going to take it, oh, and here's your letter to let you know that it's going to happen, pretty soon. That street's been named that since 1961, mayor's been on the council since 2000, Delta's, I think, since 1990, Sal's since like 1994, I've been on for a while. It's been around for a long time, I don't think that makes us all racist, I don't think that's appropriate either, I'm always amused by Twitter, I get called to all kinds of interesting things, but it is coming up now. It seems like a little more due diligence with those neighbors, certainly on staff's part, and frankly, on elected officials who want this, they could have gone out and had neighborhood meetings before now to do this. I, I was interested that other of my colleagues, I was not the only one, who got late notice of this. I, I don't understand that, I, I don't know why we wouldn't be a little more respectful to those people who are going to have to pay the cost. So, I, I just, I don't understand that, so, so I am going to be voting no. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
I think it's interesting, I was notified by a reporter a couple weeks ago, is how I learned about it. I will not support stripping any citizens' rights, so the answer's no.
Vice Mayor Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes, so by a vote of five to four, the city...
Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to change my vote to yes, as long as staff is going to come back and basically give us a report on how much this is going to cost, the city of Phoenix, and if there's any other streets out there in the future.
Okay, I think, so the request, it's a very friendly request, is that do we research any other streets, obviously we can provide the name of the streets to every council member, so they can review that, and then any cost analysis as well. Okay, so Councilman Noakowski changes to yes, so by a vote of six to three, the city council passes the proposed modified street renaming policy. Now we'll move on to number two, the motion's already been made with the extra request by Councilman DeCecio that we make sure there's any other street signs in areas that aren't affected by, or no residents are on there, we just review them, make sure there are any of them are changed to Piastewa. That's the motion, there is a second.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio, please.
Really quick, I'll be very supportive. I'm supporting the street signs to be compatible with Piastewa Peak, it's just logical sense to do that, it's the right thing to do. It's compatible, I think, and I believe that we ought to change any signs that are on the park itself, that are required, you know, that need to be changed as well. I think you'll be very, you know, those individuals that are out there, those in the neighborhood, if you just take an approach where you go talk to them, meet with them, I think you'll find them to be a lot more supportive than you think, but the problem is, is that they've been demonized, they've been put in a position, put their backs in a corner unnecessarily. All you had to do is talk to them, and communication is always a cure when it comes to talking with the, with the, with the public. So, I'm going to be very supportive of this, I think it's time for it to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. All right, there is a motion, a second, roll call.
Councilman DeCecio?
I'm sorry, yes, I thought I said that.
Councilwoman Gail?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark? Councilman Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilman Waring? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes, so item number two on this item passes unanimously, there is no further business before the city council, today's meeting is adjourned.